Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 20th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Commissioner Munoz, would you go ahead and lead us?
Who's a flyer? United States of America, the Republic. What was your state? Georgia.
Michelle, can we please have roll call?
Alex Velto?
Here.
JD Draculich?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz?
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva is absent. Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to public comment. Do you want to read your script?
Yes, thank you. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior. You will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, we did, last meeting, we had technical difficulties with the voicemail system. So we had stated that, once we were able to retrieve those voicemails, that we would add them to the record. So they have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. They have been added to the record, and if you want to play them, we can. If you don't, we don't have to, per legal.
Okay, I think, Commissioners, we all received those in our email. Does anybody have a desire to listen to those right now at this time? Okay, good.
Okay. Other than that, we, let's see, we did not receive any other public comment for this item. No emails were received, and no other voicemails were received for this item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to item number four, which is approval over the minutes. 4.1 is for Reno City Planning Commission Regular March 16th meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Does anybody need to abstain? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 4.2. This is for the Reno City Planning Commission Workshop of March 28th, 2022.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gower will move to approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Commissioner Draculich, I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Munoz, I'll abstain.
Okay, anybody else?
Commissioner Velto, I'll abstain.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'm sorry. Who abstained, besides Velto? Okay, Munoz and Velto.
And again, Michelle, from our last meeting, we have the majority of the Commissioners that were there, so we can go ahead and move forward with this. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. We will move on to item number five, which is the annual report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Welcome, Kelly. Thanks for being here.
Kelly, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please bring the mic closer to you, so we can hear you? No.
Can you turn it back? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Perfect.
It wasn't. We're bringing your presentation up just a moment.
Thank you. So this evening, what we are asking for is for the Commission to accept last year's annual report to Truckee Meadows Regional Planning, and then also recommend that council accept that report and forward it on to the agency. This is a standard report every spring that this Commission sees, council also sees. We do produce the annual report to regional planning as a requirement of state law on the regional plan. Essentially, any entity that is tasked with implementing the policies of the regional plan is required to provide this report. And essentially, what, the summary of the report, what is included in it, is it identifies those efforts taken over the previous calendar year that the city made to actually implement the policies of the regional plan. And then we also provide information in terms of, in terms of capital improvements that were conducted or completed in that prior year, as well as showing what is on the docket for several years in the future. And then, part of what the data that is provided, what that does is it helps the region to actually identify some of those cumulative impacts of development, and how that impacts the area over time. So, I'm going to have a couple of slides here, just to show highlights of what you'll see in this year's, or the 2021 annual report. Of course, as everyone here is aware, back in January of 2021, we did adopt a new, brand-new zoning code. And we also worked with our regional partners to actually open the CARES campus in Reno that houses over 600 individuals. And then also, I think as many of the folks here are aware, that we also, the city also has been very focused on prioritizing the creation of affordable housing in the city. To that end, in 2021, the city did waive over $1 million in sewer connection fees and building permit fees. And then also, overall, within the city of Reno, we did add a total of 848 new affordable housing subsidized units. And then, just an interesting statistic related to that, over 87% of the subsidized units in the region are actually located within city limits of Reno. In terms of annexations and detachments, in 2021, we did have two detachments from our sphere of influence. We did not have any new property annexed into city limits. And then, of course, one of the things that regional planning has been really, really useful for, in terms of the services that they provide, is those, the consensus forecast that we work with them to create every couple of years, that they take that information and essentially do a spatial disaggregation, I apologize for the term, but essentially break that, those projections out into particular areas where we expect to see growth over time. And we were able to, over this past year, work really closely with them to help identify what projections that we were expecting for growth in specific areas, like our sewer sheds and in each of our fire station districts. So that is an effort that really helps with our facility planning over time. And then, we had four master plan amendments that were approved in 2021 as well. Talking a little bit about what we expect for the remainder of this calendar year, certainly, I think many, many of the folks in this room are aware that the city has prioritized, continues to prioritize, efforts on affordable housing. We have just started a series of affordable housing workshops with the city council. We'll be addressing that topic on a multitude of fronts. And then, of course, one of the other items that we hope to continue to make progress on is actually updating and adopting a new set of tree protection standards. We will continue to put time and effort into developing, further developing our infrastructure and service plans, again, using a lot of those resources provided by regional planning to assist with those efforts. And then, we'll be closely collaborating with regional planning and the other agencies in the area on the creation of the Natural Resources Plan and the Public Infrastructure and Investment Plan, two very important efforts that regional planning is heading up. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation, and again, we're just asking this evening that you accept the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. You must know we have a full agenda tonight.
Very full agenda, yes.
Commissioners, do we have questions for, or comments for Kelly? Commissioner Gower?
Quick question, Madam Chair. Kelly, to find the location of the units that were approved, is that something that's on regional planning's dashboard, if we wanted to see which tiers those fell within?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. And just to be clear, so we're talking about units overall, as opposed to affordable housing units?
Yeah, so the 3, 3, 3,800 multifamily dwellings and 3,200 single-family, just so we can see where those, you know, fell spatially in the tiers.
Certainly, one of the, as part of one of the important services that regional provides, they do track the units that are popping up and actually being built out in the region, so across all of the jurisdictions. I don't know what the time lag is on that, but I know that that information is available through regional planning.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Velto?
I'm ready to make a motion. I just want to be clear, the motion is a motion to accept the report? Okay, thank you. And then I'll move to accept the report.
Commissioner Draculich, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is public hearings. We'll open item 6.1, which is case number LDC 22-00055, the Canyons, Canyons Edge Water Tanks. This is a request for a major site plan review. Do we have a presentation? It looks like we do.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, here representing Six Development. Got the wrong one, sorry about that. This is a request for a major site plan review to allow cuts and fills associated with two water tanks that will serve the Canyons PUD and the Canyons Edge Project. Just to familiarize you with the location, some of you may recall, the Canyons PUD was approved by this board last year. The water tanks will actually sit on the parcel directly east of the Canyons Project. This is the zoning map. You can see the area designated as PUD is the Canyons Project, and then this site is actually currently zoned UT40, I believe they're in for entitlements on this project now. This is the tentative map, and I, sorry for the confusion, north is oriented to the right there, just so to get a better view. As you recall, the tentative map included the tank that's, the tank site that's in discussion tonight. However, at that time, TMAU had not completed their final engineering analysis, analysis of what was needed, so we've essentially made some minor modifications to what was previously reviewed. As I mentioned, refinement of the water tank design. This request is simply to allow for the grading associated with the pad site itself, which will result in cuts greater than 20 feet and fills greater than 10 feet. There will be two 125,000 gallon tanks, each 16 feet in height, painted to match the surrounding terrain, kind of a standard TMAU design. However, as you'll see in a minute, the tanks are largely tucked behind the ridge line, so they really will not be visible from down below in the valley. Site plan, pretty exciting site plan there. I'll move on, I think, really, here, you can see the areas that are outlined in red are what would trigger the site plan review, and the stuff at the top of the screen was actually already included in the tentative subdivision map, so that's already been reviewed and approved. So as you can see, the area then questioned is really the pad sites itself, and that's really the result of going from one tank to two separate tanks. Just some typical TMAU tank examples, that these will be similar to these. And with that, I'll wrap up my presentation. Jason Gillis with Tech Engineering is also here, if you have any questions on that side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation from Leah?
Yes, you do. Good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Leah Brock, Assistant Planner with the City of Reno. This evening, I'm going to follow up on Mr. Raely's presentation and just briefly give you a little bit more information about the Canyons Water Tank Proposal. The project site is a small portion of 120 acre site located approximately 1,500 feet northeast of the eastern terminus of Mineshaft Drive. The request for a major site plan review will allow cuts greater than 20 feet and fills greater than 10 feet for the placement of two new water tanks and the associated access road. The parcels now known as the Canyons Planned Unit Development were annexed into the city in 2016. In anticipation of the water infrastructure being established on this site, the subject parcel where the water tank is proposed and the parcel to the south were both annexed into the city in January of 2020. The Canyons PUD was approved on April 14th, 2021. The approval included a zoning map amendment to create the Planned Unit Development, the tentative map to develop a 71-unit, single-family residential subdivision, and the special use permits for grading, hillside development, and disturbance of a major drainage way. The tentative map contemplated a single water tank design and the associated grading and hillside development. The water tank layout has since been redesigned with a two-tank system, and the road, grading, and pad designed for the water tank have been modified for the final design. Major site plan review is now required for the revised grading in order to accommodate those modifications. All existing conditions of the original approval remain in effect. Key issues related to this request include the change in the overall site and the associated grading, hillside development, and natural resource protection. Here you can see, the proposed design has been modified from one water tank to two. The associated 15-foot-wide paved access road remains substantially the same as previously approved. There were just minor modifications to accommodate that final design. Site security will include a maintenance gate and a six-foot vinyl coated chain link security fence. The proposed project will mitigate environmental degradation and minimize visibility and scarring. The water tanks will be placed partially behind a ridge line, screened from view of the surrounding properties to the west. Disturbed areas will be revegetated with natural plant material. Security fencing, the water tanks and all riprap used will be earth tone color and blend in with the natural environment. Disturbed slopes will be contoured to match the natural terrain. The project was reviewed by various city divisions and partner agencies. The project was presented to the Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Board, and comments were received related to the safety of the feral horses. Hearing notices were sent out to surrounding property owners, and no noted concerns were received. That concludes my presentation, and the recommended motion is on the screen, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Excuse me, let's have disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
And Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any request to speak forms, no voicemails, and no correspondence was received.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions of either the applicant or Leah. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Mike, I believe it's an easy question for you. So I saw the information, and it was even mentioned in the staff report about the feral horses issue up there. Am I, I think I understand this correctly, but I just wanted to clarify and make sure you understand that the idea of the fully enclosed fenced and gated perimeter was sufficient to address the feral horse concern?
Correct. And I did meet with Tracy from the, the horse advocate. The conditions that were placed on the tentative map and in the PUD are still in effect, which addressed all of her concerns. So there was, for example, there's a cattle guard on the road going up, so, and all those remain the same. It hasn't changed from the tentative map, so they were satisfied.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion, if there's no discussion. On case number LDC 22-00055, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the major site plan review, subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Munoz, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? What's so funny? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. There's no giggling.
No, he was laughing, because I got beat to the punch.
Okay, we're moving on to item number six, so we'll move on, open 6.2. This is case number LDC 22-00057, U-Haul Silver Lakes. This is a request for a conditional use permit. Do we have a presentation?
So, Madam Chair, thank you very much. We do not have a presentation from the applicant. The applicant is present tonight and available to answer any questions you might have, but we can just roll into the staff presentation?
I like it.
Sounds good. All right, that sounds good. Let me know if you have any problems hearing me. Joey Wenner, Associate Planner, with Development Services, for the record, here to present on this item, which is the U-Haul Silver Lake Mini Storage Facility. And I'm just learning how to work the quick clicker. So, here is the general location of the site. You'll see it's immediately north of US Highway 395 in the north valleys, that is Red Rock Road, the interchange, and then this site is at the western terminus of Silver Lake Road. Zoom in a little closer to see that the site is bounded on the north and the west by land which is in the county. It's owned by the federal government, and it's open space. To the south is the Highway 395 right away, and to the east, south of Silver Lake Road, would be some commercial development with a 24-hour fitness center immediately adjacent to this site. And then, northeast of the site, north of Silver Lake Road, is this parcel right here, which is the Copper Mesa Proposed Housing Development, which was in front of you all last month. So to move on, the site's a little over nine acres. The zoning is general commercial, and then PGOS or Parks Greenways, and open space that, open space zoning is about the western quarter of the site. That's not going to be developed. We have a mini storage facility proposed for the general commercial zoning. And that, excuse me, the mini warehouse facility requires a conditional use permit within the general commercial zoning, and that's why this is before you tonight. The rest of the city zoning in the area is general commercial, including the Copper Mesa Development, so there's no residential adjacency standards that apply. The key issues which were developed are compatibility with the surrounding uses, then the desire to protect natural resources on the site, and then the general site design. Here is what the applicant has proposed as a layout. They can provide more details on the square footage of the building and how it's used, things like that. The items I wanted to call your attention to is that there will be no impact. There's a drainage way that runs along the south of the property. That will not be disturbed as part of this request. No disturbance of the open spaces to the west of the site. And then, the use is generally compatible with the area. It's all commercial zoning out there. And I would like to point out that the applicant was made aware of the Copper Mesa Development, which is proposed. They've revised some of their plans to coordinate the improvements on sidewalk on Silver Lake Boulevard. And then you see there's a wall in the northeast of the site around the parking area. That blue area is the drainage or detention pond, so that'll create some distance between any residential development and this site. So here are the conditionally used permit findings that you're required to make. I'm available to answer any questions on any of these, and then I will just move on to the recommended motion, which is approval with the conditions listed in your staff report. And I'm available for questions, and so is the applicant. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Joey. Commissioners, let's start with disclosures with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Draculich, I've read and received emails and am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Taylor, I am familiar with the site. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any correspondence, no emails, and no request to speak forms for this item.
Okay, we will close public comment. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joey, question on condition number five, actually, conditions five and six regarding the, so, condition five is the limitation on the loading docks, use of the loading docks from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then, condition six is prohibiting idling of the trucks. How does the city enforce those conditions?
So, thank you for the question, Joey Wenner, Associate Planner. The idling of the trucks, there would be signs required on site that there's no idling, and then it would be a complaint based, if somebody complains about the site, we have a condition that requires the trucks not idle, and then it'd be code enforcement if they're in violation of it. And I'm sorry, what was the second condition?
The, the other one was condition five, limiting the loading dock hours to seven to eight.
It would be the same thing. The general requirement in city code is no operations between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. The applicant noted that their hours were less than that. We just thought it was appropriate to try to limit those hours as much as possible if there is residences nearby, even though those residences are not in residential zoning. And it would be the same enforcement, that we have a condition that that's the requirement, and if there's a violation and something comes in about that they're in violation of it, it'd be enforcement action by code enforcement.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I guess a question for the applicant.
Hi, James Mulder with Concept Architecture.
James, how's it going?
Good.
Quick question. So there's two buildings, this is the U-Haul, there's the main storage building, which I see some information about the parking in front of it. I'm assuming that's the office, the standard U-Haul type of.
Yeah, it's really, the majority of it is just indoor storage. There is a little sales office, but that, that front portion, part of it is loading area, and then customer parking.
Okay, so then, is the, so, explain to me then, the warehouse, is that warehouse tied to the same U-Haul function for storage of, you know, materials there, or is this a separate entity on the site?
No, it's, it's similar use, and you know the pods? So U-Haul has, they call U-boxes, so they're four by eight by eight, and they, these individuals store their stuff there. So the trucks will deliver those U-boxes. They have forklifts that, you know, store them in there, and if clients want to check out their unit, then U-Haul employees will go in, pull it out, and then they can look at their stuff. So it's, it's a major, bigger storage area for, for those U-boxes, but the other is actual individual units.
Okay, so that, so, I think I'm understanding, so there's basically a U-Haul function where you can rent the equipment, and they'll deliver it for your storage purposes, and that's what's being stored in the warehouse?
Yes.
As opposed to your own personal self-storage unit, which is in the other building?
Yeah.
But it is all part of one company, one, you know, entity that's there. We're not looking at a separate warehouse function and U-Haul function.
Yeah, no, it's, it's all U-Haul.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Joey, I have a quick question. You had a site plan in your presentation, and I'm not sure that, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see it in our packet for this agenda item.
As an attachment to your packet?
Usually, the, in your presentation, there, you had a site plan there that showed some of the improvements in the driveway, in the wall, and the detention. That wasn't included in our packet, I don't think. Did anybody else? Okay, yeah, so usually, bingo, site layout. I appreciate those, just in the future. I don't know if it was developed later in time, but for future reference.
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll look into it. I'll make sure that these are in the package going forward. I'm, I'm new to this, so I'll make sure that this gets to the Commission going forward.
Okay, we'll give you a break.
Thank you. Just once, please, thank you.
Thanks, Joey. Other comments? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, ready to make a motion on the matter of case number LDC 22-00057. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Draculich, I second. I can also make all the findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just real quick on that discussion, and I appreciated the answer from the client, because one of the questions, and it was brought up about the applicable, you know, compatibility with the adjacent parcels, and I didn't understand when I heard the comment that there was a warehouse there. I wanted to make sure that it was a part of the same entity and not a separate warehouse, because we're on the other side of the freeway from where the warehouse development is. So that was the reason for that questioning. I appreciate the answer, and as a result of that, I can also make the finding about compatibility with the, the adjacent area. So, thank you for the discussion, and thank you for the response from the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. We will go ahead and open item 6.3. This is case number LDC 22-00059, and this is a request for a conditional use permit. And I believe Joey is coming back. And I believe Joey is coming back up.
Yes, that's correct. Joey Winner, Associate Planner, for the record. On this item, the applicant requested a continuance in writing more than 24 hours before this meeting. That means by the zoning code, the item is continued to your May 4th meeting. I did not receive, I got the yellow signs, my name's on it. I didn't receive any public comment to this point, but I think we have to open public comment, and Michelle will check if anybody's here to speak or have, we have voicemails. Thanks so much.
Sounds good. Thank you. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment, no request to speak forms, and no voicemails. So, um,
Is there anybody in the audience wishing to make public comment on this item?
We might want to check and see if there's anybody on Zoom. If there's anybody on Zoom.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make public comment?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay, well, close public comment, and we will continue this until May 4th, did you say, Jason?
Jason Garcia-Laboo, Planning Manager, for the record. Um, this is being continued to May 4th. It is, uh, date certain, just for the record.
Okay, sounds good.
And we need a vote on that, please.
Oh, we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yes, please.
All those in favor of moving to a date certain? Oh, I guess we need a motion. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion on the case number of, excuse me, I just clicked off of it. LDC 22-00059, the US 395 exit 76 gas station and warehouse. Uh, I make a motion to continue this to the May 4th meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Velto, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for keeping me in line. We will move on to item number 6.4 now. This is, uh, case number LDC 21-00071, United Nissan of Reno. This is a request for a conditional use permit and a major deviation. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, Commissioners Sev Carlson for the record with Kemfer Kroll. On behalf of the applicant, FA Acquisitions 3 LLC and United Nissan of Reno, we have two applications, uh, before you today. One's for a commis- conditional use permit related to an auto dealership use and non-residential development over one acre within 300 feet of residentially zoned property. And then we also have a major deviation application So we will, uh, start with the vicinity. We're on Kitsky Lane, um, between Grove and Linden Streets. It's the former, uh, Dania Furniture Store. We have general commercial zoning, uh, for the property, which is identified by the dot and all of the red. Um, just for reference, uh, the residentially zoned property is in pink to the southeast and in the MF30 orange. We have a master planned land use of suburban mixed use. We intend to tear down the existing building and construct a new building, uh, just under 46,000 square feet.
Could you just speak up a little bit so we can hear you?
Certainly. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's really quiet.
Okay. Um, uh, site plan lays out the building on the south side of the parcel, uh, toward Linden Street. We're retaining access off of Kitsky Lane, and we'll have a, a paver entrance as a part of the landscaping plan there. Uh, we do intend to, uh, also keep the ingress and egress on both, uh, Grove and Linden Streets, moving the westernmost, uh, cuts, both on Grove and Linden, further away from Kitsky. So moving them east, a, a bit further away from Kitsky. Uh, we will keep the Linden Street eastern, uh, cut the way that it is. We will move the Grove Street eastern cut a little bit further west, just so we have a little bit better of a traffic line coming on the rear of the building where we have, uh, parking available for inventory, um, and customers. The floor plan, it's a two-story building, uh, showroom and offices and service, as well as, uh, drive up for service through the garage and an indoor car wash are on the first floor. And then we have offices and a portion of the parts department on the second floor. Uh, with respect to elevations, we have, uh, a fair amount of glazing on the west elevation, which will be facing Kitsky Street. We have the south elevation, which would be Linden Street, uh, with glazing and then one, uh, garage door entrance there. Uh, the north elevation, which would be facing Grove Street, and then the east elevation is the rear of the building. Uh, with respect to the landscape plan, we are, uh, preserving, uh, forty true, forty-two existing trees. Uh, most of those trees are on the outside perimeter of the property. Um, and they're, you can identify them in gold on the landscape plan. We're also proposing a number of new trees, and we get tree credit, um, for the ones that we're preserving based on the calipers. But, uh, we hit the 15% landscaping criteria between the trees, shrubs, and the decorative paving. Um, we are removing, um, a handful of dead trees or trees that are in poor condition or that are internal to the site and don't work out with the parking In terms of compatibility with surrounding uses, you're all familiar with Kitsky Lane. It's home to numerous auto dealerships and auto-related businesses. Uh, to the north of the site, we have Lithia Subaru and Reno Toyota. To the south of the site, we have Lithia Hyundai. To the west, we have a used car dealership and a tinning shop. And to the east, we have a number of automotive, uh, service providers. With respect to the residential zoning, um, which comes in to the southeast of our site, um, we're within 300 feet. Um, so from our southeast corner property line to the first apartment building, um, within that complex, it's about 140 feet. Um, it's approximately, when you measure where our new building will be located, uh, roughly 250 feet from our southeast corner of our new building to the edge of the first apartment building. And then even to get to the back edge, you get over 300 feet. So really, it only impacts that first, that first building, um, in the apartment complex. There's just another picture, so you can see the building layout, um, for the apartment complex. You can see we have the existing landscaping, um, on our project site. We have existing landscaping around the apartment project. And then you'll see the, the lighter-colored, uh, rooftops for car part, carports at the apartment complex as well, um, to create some additional buffer in addition to Linden Street from our project site. Uh, there's a recent picture, um, taken from the southeast corner of the project site. Uh, looking across from Linden Street, you can see the carports and the landscaping in the closest apartment building to our project site. With respect to the major deviation, I don't think, uh, this planning commission's seen a major deviation for lighting, uh, since the 2021 code was adopted, creating a standard of 100,000 lumens per acre, being the maximum standard. Major deviation allows us, uh, to deviate from that standard by 50%. We're requesting that full 50% deviation for 150,000 lumens per acre for this site. Um, one, we're asking because it brings us closer to Nissan's corporate development standards. As you can imagine, uh, auto dealers, where they do their business is in their parking lot. Um, a showroom is a showroom for a handful of cars, but customers see the inventory, preview the inventory out on the parking lot. And not all customers want to come out during the day. Sometimes they want to come out at night when there are fewer people around, um, to take a look at that inventory. Um, this will also allow for closer visual continuity with the surrounding properties, especially when you look at those other car dealers that have been in existence prior to the 2021 code adopting the 100,000 lumen standard. Um, before, we didn't have a specific lumen standard. It was really focused, it was a broad, uh, section of code that really focused on trespass and glare and how we keep, uh, light poles down and how we have it shielded. Um, so this is a, a fairly new standard. And speaking with our, uh, electrical engineers and our designers, um, they indicated that we would have significant less lighting, um, than most existing car dealerships in Reno, um, and particularly on the Kitsky corridor. Um, in light of that, we don't see a, a significant impact to nearby properties. And certainly, there will be less lighting on the, on the backside of this building, um, relative to the, the residential zoning, uh, with the apartment complex. But everything else really to the, uh, north, south, and west, um, already has fairly significant existing lighting. Uh, so we don't see any significant impact there, uh, nor a materially detriment, uh, to the public health, safety, or welfare. I don't know if you have any questions on, on findings. Happy to go through those and answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, I guess Nathan is remote. If he has a presentation, do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. Uh, Michelle, if I could ask you to please pull up the presentation?
Hold on, Nathan, we can't see you. Your voice from above. Oh, there you are.
Okay, uh, Sev covered the, the basis of the request. This is a 4.25 acre, uh, site previously used as a, uh, furniture store. Uh, the request is a conditional use permit to establish an auto dealership use and, uh, for non-residential use, 300 feet of a resident, a resident, residential zoning. Uh, there is also a major deviation to exceed site lighting standards by 50%. I want to clarify, in the staff report, uh, there was an error. Uh, you, you did receive a memo, uh, outlining that, uh, request that it is indeed a, uh, uh, request to exceed by 50% of the new code standard, uh, of, uh, 100,000, um, lumens per acre. The site is zoned general commercial and, uh, is master planned suburban mixed use. Next slide, please. Uh, this was a previous furniture store. Uh, the, uh, project is proposed, uh, to demolish the existing building and, uh, will be a new, uh, uh, building on the site. The site is to be brought into full, uh, co-compliance. Next slide, please. Key issues in staff analysis were site design and compatibility with surrounding land uses. Next slide, please. Uh, as far as designing major deviation goes, the site, uh, is compliant with parking and landscape standards. Uh, will be brought into stormwater control and treatment, LID standards. New site lighting, the major deviation to increase allowable lumens per acre by 50% will be 150,000 lumens per acre. Uh, this is a new code requirement. Um, it, it is related to dark skies and the like. Uh, but adjacent, uh, properties are, um, the Subaru dealership and the Hyundai dealership, uh, all, all, uh, built and, and lit to, uh, previous code standards. The, uh, recommended conditions of approval would be lighting to security levels from 10, uh, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Next slide, please. As far as compatibility, the car dealership and light industrial uses in, are located in all directions. Uh, there are apartments to the southeast. It's a bit of an, uh, uh, an anomaly, uh, with the neighborhood commercial zoning, uh, on a portion of the apartment complex. Uh, staff recommendation would be to apply, uh, uh, residential adjacency noise standards and require a sound study to make sure that, uh, those residential adjacency standards, uh, regarding noise or applied bay doors would be closed except to enter and exit the, uh, property. Auto repair, washing, and detailing would be, uh, occurring indoors. Outdoor public address would be prohibited, and animated signs would also be prohibited. Next slide, please. We did receive one general, uh, comment in support of the application. It is compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff can make the applicable findings and recommends approval of the conditional use permit subject to conditions. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Let's start with, uh, disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I drive by the site every time I go to Costco. Commissioner Munoz, no disclosures?
Uh, Commissioner Velto, same disclosures as Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Draculich, uh, read and re- received one email and, uh, support, uh, spoke briefly with the applicant and, uh, visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson received and read emails, and I think half of my living room has been furnished by the store that was there previously, so very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Taylor, um, read emails and familiar with the site. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
Correspondence was received for this item in, um, favor. There were two emails that we received. Those were forwarded to the planning commission and are added to the record. We did not receive any voicemails on this item and no request to speak forms.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the question for questions of either the applicant or Nathan. Questions, discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I do have a question. Um, Sev, I think, ask you this one. So one of the, uh, one of the comments that came in from the Ward 3 NAB was some concern about energy usage. So I have kind of a two-part question for you. The first one's easy. Um, I'm assuming that all the site lighting is going to be LED?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the second question is, based on the, um, difference between the 100,000 and the 150,000, um, are you accomplishing that with more fixtures or are you doing it with the same number of fixtures but with a different intensity and type of head?
You know, I think we're still, we're still looking at that because from our technical folks' standpoint, this is going to probably be the, the most underlit dealership that this group owns. So they're figuring out whether it's more poles or, or, we'll say, different fixtures on fewer poles. Um,
Thank you. I think that answers the question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Draculich, uh, kind of question for both of you, I guess. Um, I do understand the need to do business, uh, well-lit, whether it's at night, or notably safety concerns and, you know, any theft that may occur in the middle of the night. So I guess for both of you, in regards to the nearby dealerships, you mentioned that most of them have lumens a lot higher than that per acre. Do we know what that number is or, you know, what's comparable?
You know, I don't, uh, Commissioner Draculich, Sev Carlson, for the record, um, I don't have a comparable lumen count. We've, we've been trying to find one. Um, the best approximation that I can make is that we would be more similar to a grocery store parking lot than a traditional auto store, auto store parking lot, even at 150,000 lumens.
So nearby dealership, though, something can significantly higher?
Yeah, I, I think a nearby dealership could be upwards of 700,000 lumens.
Oh.
I don't have the, the concrete piece, but that's, that's the discussion of traditional dealerships. And obviously, um, before this code adoption, we didn't have a, a lumen standard. Everything was focused on, uh, glare or spillover onto other parcels, which really focuses on pole height and then the type of fixture and whatever blockage you have on that fixture to keep the light from going down rather than spreading or going upward.
Nate, you want to chime in at all?
Uh, no, th- th- this was a, uh, new code provision with, with the code update. Uh, it was related to dark sky lighting. Um, the site would, would be subject to, uh, overall, you know, cutoff lighting, a sky lighting. The site would be subject to overall, you know, cutoff lighting, LED, and the like. But this is a code requirement that we're finding, particularly with car dealerships, that, you know, can be problematic. Overall, it's applicable to dark skies. But given the location of this particular site, it between two car, existing car dealerships, it appears appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Veltou?
Yeah. Sev, if the surrounding dealerships are, have lumens, have lighting that's much stronger than what you're proposing, why are you only seeking a 50%?
That's all that we're allowed by code. So we have the standard. We are allowed the major deviation at 50%. You know, something beyond that would probably be a request of city council to amend the code for an amendment to the standard.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? Motion?
I'll do a, excuse me, I'll do a quick discussion, and then I'm going to make a motion. So it's an interesting concept and hearing about this, because I was looking at it. And typically, from their standpoint, it's not so much the lumens that are in question, it's the foot candles at the car. It's how bright is the site where the cars are. So the lumens is how much energy they're pushing towards it. So I think what you're going to have to do is focus and have a lot more bright lighting in very small areas of this. And so I think that's how they're going to address it. So I think from that standpoint, it is a significant reduction to what we've got in the neighborhood areas. They're going to be using the LEDs, which do give off a very bright, very clean light. And I think once they start really focusing on where they're going to be at, the 150, it may be a challenge, but it's going to be appropriate. So I don't have a problem with that. I think they're going to meet what they need to do. So, but just kind of wanted to say that it is an interesting concept to hear, that we're talking about overall lumens as opposed to what the acceptable foot candles are, because that's really how bright everything is. So the bigger the site, the more lumens you need to get it to just a baseline. So with that said, I am prepared to make a motion unless there's any additional discussion.
Before you do, Commissioner Johnson, I'd be curious to have staff come back at some point. And I want to know how this is being implemented. It sounds like it's sort of a problematic code provision. If that's something that needs to be addressed, or, I mean, the nuts and bolts of it seem a little bit problematic. So appreciate that follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number LDC 21-00071, United Nissan of Reno. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit and major deviation, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Veltou, a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. You can hand out little keychains with flashlights on them.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 6.5. This is case number LDC 22-00058 Gateway at Galena. This is a request for a tentative map and to a conditional use permit. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
I'll make this go way down lower. Can you guys hear me okay? Great. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhard. Oh, thank you. All right. Again, my name is Karen Downs. I'm with Manhard Consulting, and I'm here representing the applicant, Art Tech Communities. Who I will add is with us virtually tonight. All right. The project is Gateway at Galena. It is located south of Wedge Parkway. The address is 18600 Wedge Parkway, south of Mount Rose Highway, excuse me. And also, if you see on that map, it's south of the UNR Redfield Campus. It is west of Interstate 80 and east of Wedge Parkway. Here's just an aerial map to, that shows the whole site. It shows that the project site is undeveloped, but it has been previously disturbed with other construction projects, with the 580 project and the UNR site. Here's another aerial that shows our project boundary laid over the site. So you can see where it is in relation to some of the other projects and the UNR campus, or the other parcels and the UNR campus. All right. Our land use designation's on the site. It has a master plan of public, quasi-public. It was originally intended as an expansion to the UNR facility. And you'll see there, it's surrounded by suburban mixed use. It has a zoning of mixed-use suburban. It does not, mixed-use suburban doesn't set a maximum density, and it's intended here to allow for higher-density residential uses, retail, and commercial. And then you'll see, as we go on further, our project is consistent with all the mixed-use suburban development standards. I want to talk for a minute about the history of the site. So as you know, with the adoption of Title 18, it superseded the Redfield Regional Center Plan, which historically designated this area specifically for growth and development. So our site is the RED designation that's retail, commercial, and academic. And it was intended for about 500,000 square feet of classroom space and office facilities, intended for 14,000 students, and higher-density housing and other uses related to the university. And although this didn't translate over exactly to Title 18, that mixed-use suburban zoning designation allows for all of these types of uses. And I want to add in here, too, in that Redfield Regional Center, that kind of plan for all of the infrastructure and facilities associated with this site, it recommends, or it has an average density for that retail, commercial, academic area of 30 dwelling units per acre is the recommended development, and it has a minimum development density of 14 units per acre. Our proposed, as we get through here, you'll see is 10.71. So it's lower than what was planned for this site. Let's see. I also wanted to note, too, that there's a Mount Rose Seenet Byway Corridor. This is not within that. It ends, that corridor management plan ends at Wedge Parkway, which, again, our project is east of Wedge Parkway. So the application that we have before you tonight is a tentative map. It's for 361 residential condominiums and 213 garage spaces. It is a similar product as a, that we recently brought before you that had the detached garage spaces. So that's what those are. There's also an associated conditional use permit for more than 20 units in this mixed-use suburban zone. I also want to point out that if this wasn't a tentative map, if it was apartments, it would be a minor conditional use permit and would be administratively approved, not come before the planning commission. But it's all joined together because of the tentative map request. There's also a, it would be a site plan review, but included in this conditional use permit for fills greater than 10 feet in height. There's a related application for annexation that goes before the city council, doesn't come to planning commission. Okay, so our site plan for this project, there are, as you see up here, there are three distinct communities. So we'll talk about each of the three a little bit individually, but I wanted to show the whole site plan. The total area of our site is 33.71 acres. Our project for all three communities, villages, is 361 units. As I talked about before, the mixed-use suburban zoning designation does not set a maximum density. And our proposed density is 10.71 units per acre. The total common area and open space is, it's about 43% of the site, 14.39 acres. That includes the formal landscape area, the amenity area, and the open space. All right. As you'll see on here, access to the site is from Wedge Parkway. So it's south, again, it's south of Mount Rose Highway, and then there's two access points on Wedge Parkway. The primary access, as you'll see on here, is the existing entrance road to the campus right now, to the UNR campus. This also allows for, you'll see that road extending to the east of future road connection to the other private property that's around this site. For the units on this site, the properties range from studio to three-bedroom units. There's 113 one-bedrooms or studios, 213 two-bedroom, and 35 three-bedroom units. And it ranges from 544 to 1563 square feet. And then we'll talk about some of the recreation and landscaping for each parcel, or each little village area. So let me go back to the site plan. There are three parcels that comprise the site. There's parcel two, parcel three is in the middle, and parcel four is up to the northeast side. So we're going to start with parcel two. This site is 7.09 acres. This has a product on it. Parcel two and parcel four has a product on it that you've seen before. That's the, called the Flex 20 Building. And each building has 20 units in it. There are some attached garages to each building. There's some detached garages that are the separate parcels. And each building looks the same. Each building has the 20 units. There's a total of 80 units on this site, and the density for this parcel, it's 11.28 units per acre. It exceeds the required parking by providing those attached garage spaces, the detached garage spaces, tandem spaces, which are in front of each garage space, and then additional surface spaces throughout. This parcel itself has its own community areas and its own formal landscape areas that has a dog park, barbecue areas, fire pit, tot lots, and then internal pedestrian walkways that connects it to each parcel that's proposed. This parcel four is up in the northeast area of the project. It's the similar product that has the 20 units and attached and detached garages. This is the largest of the parcels. There's 180 units on this site, and the proposed density here is 13.96 for just this parcel. It also exceeds the required parking. There's 345 spaces proposed that includes all of those different types of parking, the attached garage, detached garage, tandem spaces, and surface spaces. Also with its own landscape area and amenities, which include a clubhouse and the pool area, the outdoor patio area, barbecue, tot lot, dog parks, and the pedestrian walkway to connect all three different parcels. I want to add to this. If you'll note, there's one area that's adjacent to an existing property owner, existing single-family residential property owner house. And we have proposed, through working with him, proposed with this additional coordination, the enhanced landscaping. So it's not shown here on this initial site plan, but here's a blow-up of that enhanced landscaping. All right. For these two parcels, two and four, here's conceptual elevations. Now there's a kind of a pine cone theme on the building to complement the area. Those are the detached garage buildings. The clubhouse for parcel four. And then example of what the site will look like, project imagery. All right. Parcel three. This one's in the middle. It's a different type of product. It's innovative design, and it's designed to accommodate the topography of the site. As you can see, the buildings are a little different sizes, and they can be oriented a little different to allow for the, to adjust for the topography. The parcel size here is 13.73 acres. It's named UltraFlex because they're flexible type of units. The density on this site is 7.36 units per acre. And again, we provide parking in excess of what's required. There's 261 spaces provided through the attached garages. There are no detached garages on this type of use. And then there's the tandem spaces in front of the garages and surface spaces. This parcel also has a clubhouse, pool, the outdoor patio area, barbecue, and then the walkways to connect through all three parcels. And then here's an example of the elevations for these buildings. Again, each building, there's a variety of sizes based on the number of units provided, but this is generally what they will look like. And the clubhouse. And project imagery of this specific parcel three. All right. The last part of the request before you tonight are, there's three areas of fills that are requested. I do want to note that there's no cuts proposed on the site, but there are three minimal areas of fill that are greater than 10 feet. There's two areas of 13 feet and one of 15 feet. And if you've kind of saw on the aerial, if you're familiar with the site, that the site itself is disturbed, although not built, the majority of the site is disturbed, and the site has been designed to work with the topography. There's those three little areas of fill requested. So a couple areas I wanted to point out. We did submit this with the traffic study, which hopefully you've had, that looked at the Mount Rose Highway and Wedge Parkway intersection and the access intersections for current and then as well as 2041-plus project. So as analyzed, and primarily because this site has been designed for this level of development and more, the key intersections all meet applicable policies and level of service standards as exists. So there are no offsite improvements proposed. I wanted to point out some additional studies other than the standard ones that are provided. Additional studies with this site that were provided were, there was a TMA discovery that shows there's adequate supply, adequate storage, and adequate fire flow needed for the project. We did a sewer report, of course, and a traffic study, a geotech investigation, a steamboat buckwheat survey for the site, which did not identify any buckwheat concerns on the site. There's a soil chemistry report that's been provided. And then with final design, there will be some other site-specific studies, an archaeological survey, tree survey, and acoustical analysis. And you'll see those in the conditions of, the proposed conditions. Finally, of course, we're here to answer any questions. Again, as I mentioned before, Mike Daniels is here with the applicant, Art Tech Communities. Chris Baker is here with Manhard Consulting as well. Jonathan Flecker, who's with Katie Anderson and Associates that prepared the traffic study, is here for any questions. And Mark Gookin with Terriface Engineering, who prepared the hydrology report, is here for any questions as well.
Thank you, Karen. Joey, switch sides on us.
Yes, sorry. I don't have the same aura and presence as the last staff presenter, Nathan, but Joey, when our associate planner, for the record, here to present on this item, which is the Gateway at Galena tentative map and conditional use permit request. So here is an overview of the site. The applicant established pretty well where the site is. You'll see it's immediately west of Interstate 580, south of Mount Rose Highway, sort of behind the Redfield Campus. The site's a little less than 34 acres. The zoning for the site, there's three parcels. They have a city zoning designation of mixed-use suburban, or They have a city zoning designation of mixed-use suburban, or MS. The tentative map request is before you tonight, and I do apologize, I transpose those numbers. It's 361 residential individual condo units for residences, and then 213 non-residential condominiums, which is because the garages are separate parcels. They are termed non-residential condominiums. This is a arrangement that has happened a lot in the past. Frequently, the most recent project that you all saw with it was the park at Idlewild. Last month, I believe, the planning commission reviewed and approved. The second half of the request that you're hearing on this item is a conditional use permit. That's triggered by grading, there's fills greater than 10 feet, and then also because there are more than 20 units in the mixed-use suburban zone, a conditional use permit is required. The third part of this request, which is not before you tonight because it goes directly to council, is an annexation request. So these three parcels and the parcel that contains the Redfield Campus are completely surrounded by the city, but they are outside the city limits, they're in the county. The reason for that would be that the, the parcels were previously under state ownership, and they were planned to be developed as part of the Redfield Campus. That's no longer the case. These three parcels are under private ownership, being developed privately, so the applicant has brought in a annexation request. That is tentatively scheduled to be in front of City Council in May. Going back to the zoning, you'll see it here, the red-hatched area is mixed-use suburban zoning. That's sort of a transition between the suburban areas of the city and the more intense, higher intensity uses. That is what this site is zoned, the zoning south of Mount Rose Highway is consistent here in mixed-use suburban. The other city zoning in the area is general commercial zoning, which is the solid red north of Mount Rose Highway with the Rayleigh Shopping Center in it. Here is the layout of the site. The applicant went through it. There is parking provided, the parking will be adequate. Again, those garages are for parking only. They will be, will ensure through conditions that those are only for parking, no additional residences or additional storage. And there is adequate parking on the site, per the zoning code. There's no bus service to the site, but the Regional Transportation Commission has the RTC Flex Ride program. This is in that service area. It will be required that the applicant provide information on that program to future residents. As the applicant mentioned, there was a traffic report that was conducted for this and submitted to city staff for review. City staff has reviewed that recommendation, or I'm sorry, for that traffic report, and all the recommendations in that report will be implemented. Touching again on points of access, there are two proposed points of access on Wedge Parkway, which are the red circles on the left side of your screen here, and then a emergency-only access into the Redfield Campus, which is the blue circle in the top middle of your screen. Here they are again, those are the two intersections circled in red. Once more on Wedge Parkway, that blue circle in the top right would be where the emergency access is. I will note that fire will review this and make sure that they meet all the fire code standards for accessibility to the site, and that would occur at the final map stage. Moving on to the architecture that was proposed, I won't go in as deep as the applicant did, but this is the type of development we would expect to see under the mixed-use suburban zoning. 29 total residential buildings and three parcels or clusters for individual units and associated amenities which the applicant outlined. These buildings would be required to meet all building articulation standards in the zoning code. The maximum height of the building in the mixed-use suburban zoning district, there's actually no maximum required height. Any building taller than 55 feet requires a additional review. The highest point of the highest residential buildings proposed in this development are at 44 feet 9 inches, and those are three-story buildings. The buildings will all be sprinkled, and they'll be required to meet all fire code requirements for the development. Moving on, the last cluster of items up the site that I'll sort of cover is the environmental aspects of it. The site has grading that will be required to meet the grading requirements in city code. There's no hillside development triggered by this development. The second item I'll touch on in environmental is the steamboat buckwheat. This is in an area that has been identified as a potential habitat for that. City staff has been in coordination with the state. We've looked at it, we've crafted a condition that we feel is comfortable to cover protection of this species. And then last, there are existing trees on site. There is mitigation for those trees that are required by the zoning code. In addition, there is a condition proposed to further include tree mitigation. I'll move on to public comment. Those have all been either included in your packet, forwarded to you, or we have the voicemails ready for, to be played. We did receive several comments. The three main concerns that came up the most, if I can summarize, would be the increased traffic generated by this development, the ability of the schools to handle the additional students from this development, and then just the housing type and the type of unit and the height of the buildings. So I'll move on. The recommended motion from staff is approval of the tentative map and conditional use permit. With the conditions in your staff report, there is one, excuse me, minor change, which is on your screen now with condition 12. The entire condition's up there, but in the last sentence, there's that red word, disturbed. The applicant requested to have that added to, when they first read the, the condition, they had a concern that they would be required to irrigate all areas of the site, including the open space, which will not be disturbed. That wasn't the intent of the condition, and that's what would not have been what staff enforced, but for clarity, they asked that this word be put in. It does not change the intent of the condition or the ability of staff to enforce the condition, and we have no concerns with adding that word in. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer questions. We also have the fire marshal in attendance and engineering staff to answer some more technical questions. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Joey. Commissioners, let's start with disclosures with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have visited the site, spoke with applicants representative, and received and read emails.
Commissioner Munoz, I am familiar with the site and I read emails.
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site, read and reviewed emails and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Dragic, same disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I received and read emails, familiar with the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and with the adjacent property owner.
Commissioner Taylor, read and received emails, corresponded with the applicant's representative, and I'm familiar with the site. It looks like we have one request to speak for on this item. Chris Barrett with STC Ventures LLC is in favor. So you have three minutes, please.
Thank you. For your record, Chris Barrett, representing STC Ventures. We are the, the property owners immediately south of this project. We are in full support of the project. For the past year or so, we've been working with the planning team for the proposed project Gateway at Galena. They've been wonderful to work with. We've been working on access and utilities for the site. We plan sometime in, within the next six months, to appear before you with our project, which is going to be a swimming tennis complex with indoor/outdoor tennis courts, indoor pool, outdoor pool, pickleball courts, et cetera, and some associated commercial restaurants, facilities there. So it complements what we want to do, we complement what they're doing, it works for the neighborhood. I think some of the concerns that you might be hearing, we can be a part of that solution to alleviate any of those, those concerns. So I'm here for any questions, if you have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do we have any other public comment for this item, Michelle?
We do, we have a voicemail that we will transition to. And then just for the record, we did receive emails that were forwarded to the planning commission, and those are part of the record.
This is Rosie Mann, case number LDC 22-00058, Gateway at Galena. I would like to know where we are going to get the water for all these projects. We're in a heavy drought, and we need water. I already, I also wrote a letter voicing other concerns, like infrastructure and other planning, but my main concern is water.
I think that's it.
Okay, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or of Joey. Who would like to start?
Commissioner Dragic. Yes, thank you. I guess, Joey, whoever is here to talk about the traffic a little bit, just wanted to go over that briefly. Oh, there we go.
Mike, Michelle, engineering manager for the record.
Hi, Mike, thanks for coming up. Yeah, I mean, basically, my experience is early morning going west on Mount Rose Highway. You got heavy traffic, turn lanes going into Galena High. My logic tells me that the residents in these condos won't have an issue getting out, going to work, maybe issue coming back home. I mean, basically, I've seen it pretty log-jammed up there in general. If you want to speak to the flow of this traffic coming in and out of this condo at those peak times.
Yeah, the applicant did do a traffic study, they did a level of service study, and the levels of service are adequate with this project.
Okay. And see any issues with how it's constructed right now or set up?
I do not.
Okay. That's all the answer I needed.
We like having you here.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Trey, since he's here. It's so fun to see these people again in person, you know?
Good evening, Trey Palmer, Fire Marshal, for the record, and it's good to see you in person as well.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
You bet.
Question for you, so my understanding is the response time for this project is nine minutes for the closest fire station, I think 12 minutes for the next closest. I understand it's going to be sprinkled. I know we've had this conversation before, but I just wanted to have it with you again for this project. How does Reno Fire, in this situation where the response time is greater than that standard six minutes, you've got it sprinkled, and you're in an area where there's potential wildfire impact concerns, like we saw with the fire, I want to say it was last fall, right, in this area? How does Reno Fire view this project within that context?
Yeah, this, this project's a little unique right now because technically, this is sphere of influence only at this time. And because of that, the county is the first responding agency until we annex, if we annex. So at, at this point, if there was an emergency in there and it stayed within the county, the closest fire station is Station 36, which is Arrow Creek, and that's about six to seven minutes out. If we do annex it, then yes, we will be the first responder, and you're right. It's about nine minutes from Station 12, and 12 minutes from Station 6. So the sprinklers mitigate the fire aspect, that buys us a lot of time, and for the most part, we'll put a fire out inside the building. It, it does not address the issue of medical response that, that will be delayed. Sprinklers do not take care of that problem. But under the code, that, the allowance is made with the sprinkler system, so. And all with, well, to be honest, if there is a wild and emergency, we do have automated, automatic aid agreements with the county in that area, so they would be dispatched as soon as possible. We do have mutual agreements with the county, so upon their request, we would send a medical unit. But overall, if it was us as a first responder, then there would be a delay in medical.
Follow-up question, I think we saw some concern in the public comments about, you know, evacuation in the event of an emergency, and I don't know what it looked like during that fire in the fall, but is that a concern with this development?
Not necessarily this development. I will tell you that the access points that are proposed on the plan are not remote enough under our current code. That is something we would have to address in the final map. Right now, they kind of bottleneck to the same road, which is Wedge Parkway. So we would have to work with them before final approval to get more remote secondary access point. And per the code, that would fix that problem on the egress, but as presented, it does need some work.
Sorry, can you explain what that means?
Yeah. So the fire code is pretty specific on an apartment building complex. With sprinklers, you can go up to 200 units before you put in, you have to put in a secondary access point. This one does go well above that. So even though they're sprinkled, they are required two access points for the fire department, and the code requires that those access points are remote enough. So if one area is blocked, we have plenty of room to go around, and same with the egress. Currently, right now, well, the code states that it has to be half the hypotenuse of the total development. So if you take that development, put it in a rectangle, put a hypotenuse right down the middle, and half of that is how far away the access points have to be. And that, that's something that would have to be reworked in this.
Okay, and you said that would be reworked before?
Final map, correct, before we could accept it.
Okay, great. Thanks as always for the answers.
Okay, you bet, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Actually, I'd like to just follow up on that and maybe bring the applicant up here, because when I hear something along the lines of needing to rework between a tentative map and a final map, I'm a little concerned as to what that might be. So maybe if the applicant come, come up here and, and I don't know if we need to throw a, a plan up on the site or something, just to understand, I know you showed two points of access off of Wedge Parkway and a third fire access, but I think that access is still from Wedge Parkway's. So maybe just to understand if we're, you know, looking at a potential change to this, if you've got an idea of what that could be.
Getting there. So that is correct on the, right now, the emergency access is through the existing, trying, the mouse will point. For the emergency access through here, the gated emergency access, and then the two access points onto Wedge Parkway. Again, as the, as was said, it would have to be reworked with final map. There's this additional, what would end up being a loop road that continues to the south project. As far as reworking, I know the applicant is here on Zoom. Mike, I don't know if you have any additional information. I could.
We would work with the fire department on this, and one of the things that we've looked at with that issue was regards to providing a secondary access that ran out to Mount Rose Highway through the university property. If you're looking at that map you're looking at right now, there's a, there's an easement that runs out towards Mount Rose Highway. And we just need to work with the university to get, to get that access point, and it would be a gated access out on the Mount Rose Highway. That would be the only other option that we would have, because we've just got Wedge Parkway and Mount Rose Highway as the roads that surround us. So that's what we would look at.
Okay, and so I guess, I appreciate that. Can, can you state your name for the record? I didn't quite catch that.
I'm sorry, Mike Daniels with Art Tech Communities, developer on the project.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so if I, if I'm understanding what he's saying right, it's not, you're not looking at any internal changes, there would be the potential for another access cut to the north to come in off of a different roadway.
Right, it sounds like gated access to Mount Rose Highway.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I was trying to clarify that, so I'll throw it back to Commissioner Gower now, because.
Well, Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to hear from Trey, if that's kind of in the neighborhood of something that would be acceptable. I know we're kind of doing some ad hoc site plan looking here, but just trying to get a sense of if we're close with this or not.
Yes, for the record, Trey Palmer, Fire Marshal, and yes. From what he said, if they could do a secondary access that's further away, remote, going to Mount Rose, that would work.
And the difference there is that. And the difference there is that you're providing an access to a different roadway, to Mount Rose Highway versus another one to which?
That is correct. So basically, the difference is you're providing a secondary access that has two, two completely remote access points. So if one major access point was completely blocked, we have a secondary to get engine companies and people out in a totally different fashion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions?
I have a quick question for either Joey or Jason. We just heard that there might be a delay in the medical response. Are there any concerns from City of Reno from your perspective on that? Why or why not?
Yes, thank you. Joey, I'm our associate planner, for the record. There are concerns with any project. You look at the the master plan and what the policies are, and there are many policies in there, and you evaluate the pros and cons of all of them. I think what the Fire Marshal just said outlines what the issue is with this extended response time. But overall, that was evaluated.
Okay. And then my other question is, in the presentation, the applicant said that their maximum height, excuse me, was about 44 feet, somewhere around there. I know there is no maximum height requirement for, in this zoning. Do, and there wasn't a condition on that 44 feet of height. Is there a reason that we needed to include that in the conditions? Or does it?
No, I mean...
Impact?
Yeah, thanks for the question. The, there is no maximum height in the zoning district. Any building taller than 55 feet under the zoning code definition of height would require a site plan review. This is 10 feet below that, to the highest point of the building. It's actually going to be a lower height under our zoning code, because we define height a little weird in the zoning code, but it's well below what would require additional review. There's no conditions proposed to limit their height to anything lower than 55 feet.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that some of the questions that we got, that there's not going to be 70-foot buildings going in there are potential. Sorry, Commissioner Munoz, did you have a question? Other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Madam Chair, thank you. I was thinking, backing off of Commissioner Gower instead of asking my own questions the first time. So just question first for Joey. The, I noticed that there's a comment in here about the master plan conformance and that this is, still has a holdover from the public, public quasi-public. This is, right now, the zoning is, is it compatible with the master plan designation?
The current zoning is not really compatible with the master plan designation. The master plan designation, you're correct, is the public quasi-public designation, which is a holdover from when this was anticipated to be an expansion of the Redfield campus.
So then, so this is one of those, and I think you said it in here, it's going to be cleaned up by the city to bring some of these holdouts into conformance. So the zoning and the master plan designation are in compliance?
Yes, that that's correct. The city is in the process of going through all the wards and evaluating what the master plan designation and the zoning is and looking for discrepancies. Ward two has not been evaluated yet. That would be at some point, and that would be evaluated by the city at that time.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Karen. A couple of questions for you. Following up on Madam Chair's question about the building height, in conjunction with that, on the, I guess it would be the northeast side of the development, where you're closest to the existing residents.
Yes.
It appears there's quite a bit of a height difference between your building elevation and the existing residence. Do you have an idea of what that height difference is? And the corollary to that is how far away are the two buildings as well?
Correct. It is, I'm going to answer that in two parts. I don't have the existing building or the height of that building, so I couldn't compare the two. What I'll note is that the UNR building, that's also adjacent to the same property owner, is at 45 feet as well. And then this one has the max height of 45 feet. This, where this property is in relation to the UNR building is about 30 feet lower than, than the UNR site that's also the 45 feet. So they're compatible in height to what's there existing. I just don't know the, the height of the property owner that's there, the residence that's there.
I can answer that. This is Mike Daniels again. So between McKay's house and our residential, first, a closest apartment, there is roughly 24 feet of vertical elevation difference. And we are 325 feet away from their existing home to our closest building.
Thank you, Mike. And then I guess I'll ask the same question. You presented a slide that talked about working with the property owner and the enhanced landscape that's there. Is that something that is, is being offered up, but it's not a condition right now? Is there any issue with that being a condition to one of these, that the landscaping has additional, enhanced landscaping along that edge of the development as presented tonight could be a condition?
Yeah, no concern with that being addition, with that being a condition. And I think Mike has agreed to continue working with him if there's a type of tree or anything additional he wants. So it's, it's not an issue either way to either do it and continue to work with him to, to make sure that it's compatible or to have it as a condition.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And certainly, that's something for the commission to determine, but I just wanted to ask that. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question regarding the annexation for Joey. Joey, can you just confirm what the, the next steps are related to the annexation and council's decision, if it goes approved versus if it's not approved, what happens to this development?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Thank you. Joey, I'm our associate planner, for the record. So the request has been submitted by the applicant to annex this. There is no condition that staff is recommending as part of this request before you tonight that they're required annex. So you are considering the conditional use permit and tentative map tonight. If you all are to approve that request, then the annexation is still heard separately by council. Council has the option to either approve that annexation or deny it, but that's sort of separate from the tentative map request. If this tentative map request is approved tonight, then the tentative map is approved. The only difference would be that there's, the city cannot accept infrastructure outside of our city limits, and that is currently proposed. So roads, sewer, what have you. The applicant, I think, is anticipating that that would be public. If the annexation is not passed or is denied, then they would have to rework what to do, because the city will not be accepting that infrastructure, if that makes sense.
So essentially, the, the request as proposed in our packet is contingent upon, as it's framed, is contingent upon approval of the annexation, right? Because we had a conversation with Reno Fire, and, you know, there's the sewer and water, maybe not, but that's contingent upon the city providing those services.
Yeah, that's correct. I would say that the, the development currently as designed anticipates that that will be public infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, oh, sure. Karen, you want to follow up on that?
I did want to follow up. Thank you. I just wanted to add that we would anticipate public infrastructure, and if for some reason it wasn't approved to be annexed to the city, we would work with the county on that. I also wanted to add to, on the annexation, that we do meet every annexation policy that the city has for annexation. It's a tier one, tier one land in the regional plan, which is, I don't have my notes, but anticipated for development. It meets all of the city annexation policies.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that, Karen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jackalich, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
In a matter of case number LDC 22-00058 Gateway at Galena, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and associated conditional use permits, subject to the conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Wait, before you second, are you making the motion with the proposed?
That's right, with Commissioner Johnson's.
There was also a proposed change by staff, the wording of an existing?
Yes, thank you. Yes, with that proposed wording. Thank you. Condition 12, was it? Thank you.
Commissioner Belliswal, second?
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Just to clarify, did you include the condition for the enhanced landscaping as presented by the applicant in that motion, or just the change to the condition?
And I'm sorry, yeah, condition 12 from the staff, and then I think we should consider what you brought up on the enhanced landscaping.
Just as, as a discussion point, I guess, to that, I think certainly, the applicant has demonstrated a willingness to work with that, and I don't, you know, I, I see no reason why they would renegue upon that. I'm just thinking that in, in this case, they've worked closely to this point, if it, you know, even if, you know, just as something that was presented this evening has conditioned, I don't, I would be open to hearing what anybody says about that, but that would be the only question I would have.
Joey, did you want to say something real quick? Or not real quick?
Yeah, yes, I, thank you. I did just want to jump in and note that you have condition one, which is a standard condition in your packet, that the materials presented will be followed. Staff feels comfortable that this is part of those presented materials of the application, and thinks it would cover it. It also might create problems. Staff hasn't reviewed that additional landscaping and made sure that we're good with it. So leaving it general that there will be additional landscaping there, in the spirit of what is in those, I feel as staff that that would cover it. Condition one. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate staff weighing in on that. And in light of that, I didn't see no reason for an additional condition for that. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so my motion would just, everything in the condition 12.
Okay.
I still second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioners, I think we're going to take a 10-minute break and be back here at 7:55.
We're ready. You ready? You ready? Everyone ready?
Okay, thank you, everyone. We will get back to the planning commission meeting, and we will open item 6.6, which is case number LDC 22-00023 Reno City Center Skyway. This is a request for a conditional use permit. And do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Garrett Gordon, tonight representing Reno City Center LLC. With me as well tonight is Christian Nelson. He's a director of architecture for Moser Architecture Studio, and he'll be happy to answering specific design questions for the pedestrian walkway. So it's exciting to be before you. This is the first time this body has heard about the transformation of the old Harris Building into Reno City Center. Most all the uses are permitted by right, so there's been no need to come before this body for any approvals of a $500 million all-inclusive mixed-use residential and commercial property, of course, on the site of the old Harris Reno Building. Over 500 newly renovated apartments will be available when completed. There's three towers. They're currently working on the first tower, and will move forward in the next two to three years, to four to five years, on each of the towers to get some newly, new units and in the market in downtown Reno. In addition to the residential, Reno City Center property will provide numerous shopping and dining options, office space, and a newly designed plaza with entertainment space. Mr. Moser behind me is also scoped with designing the plaza, which will include artwork. You can see very lush landscaping and just really a beautiful area for downtown Reno and really Reno City Center. Just a couple other pictures. I don't, I don't think this body has seen the plans. You can see not only the residential tower, but the outdoor pool deck and the men and women of the residence, the plaza, indoor/outdoor dining, some entertainment space, not only for residents, but, you know, locals coming downtown, tourists coming downtown, a very interactive space for downtown Reno. Tonight before you is a proposal for a pedestrian walkway. The proposed pedestrian walkway will connect office spaces for the Clear Capital corporate headquarters. In the Reno Gazette Journal, a few months ago, Clear Capital announced that they'd be moving their corporate headquarters, about 500 employees, to downtown Reno. This is exactly what Reno's master plan, exactly what Reno's downtown action plan has focused on, is creating these live, work, play districts, and bringing employees and people into downtown to activate downtown. So the walkway will connect the third floor of Reno City Center to the fourth floor of the old Whitney Peak parking garage. There is currently insufficient parking in the Harris garage and internal circulation infrastructure to accommodate this Clear Capital relocation. So we, our city center, executed a lease with Whitney Peak for exclusive right for parking, along with the right to construct, construct this pedestrian walkway to move people in the mornings and the evenings from the parking garage to their offices and back and forth. The pedestrian walkway will provide direct, safe, and accessible entry to office space for these approximately 500 employees. So I think there's been one other kind of, it's called a skyway in code. We're calling it a pedestrian walkway. Certainly, historically, skyways have been where the Atlantis constructed sushi, where downtown Eldorado Caesars now took over a full block. This is simply just a pedestrian walkway, a people mover. But still, under code, it's considered a skyway. So there's skyway design guidelines, and these guidelines have been on the books for a while. And of course, City of Reno just went through an update to their Reno Development Code and didn't change these guidelines. So these are still the guiding policies of what you're looking at tonight. Let me point you to the purpose and intent of a skyway. It says, "Skyways provide an opportunity to increase the economic viability of a project. The short block lengths that exist in downtown Reno, and certainly here over Commercial Way, make it difficult to provide large-scale projects to strengthen Reno's economy." I think we can all agree, converting Harris into a work, live, play district is a large-scale project. In addition, property designated skyways may provide for improved traffic flow, certainly will be the case here, increased pedestrian safety, and increased pedestrian comfort, absolutely the case here as well. And it says, "Finally, skyways provide an additional revenue source for the City of Reno." We will have to pay real property tax for personal property on the skyway as well. So those three bullet points I focused on, right from the purpose and intent section, economic viability of a project. Here, Clear Capital is making this request to facilitate their major investment. They're taking up three floors, 75,000 square feet, and moving these employees into downtown Reno by moving their corporate headquarters in the Reno City Center, over five, around 500 employees. This is a large-scale project, live, work, play project, thousands of residents, employees, customers. So there's a need to facilitate this internal circulation for the site. So there's a need to facilitate this internal circulation for the site. Harris Parking Garage has limited capacity. It has about 800 parking spaces. So when you look at 500 units, a couple people a unit, you look at parking for the restaurants, the other office spaces, there's not enough infrastructure on the site to accommodate this huge investment by Clear Capital. So we went ahead and leased the parking spaces from Whitney Peak and need this direct pedestrian access to move folks back and forth. And right from the skyway design guidelines, pedestrian safety, pedestrian comfort. This allows for direct access to office space and garage during all hours. So early morning, evening, you can use this space. Inclement weather, a couple weeks ago, what we're in April, and I think we walked outside and it was snowing. So certainly inclement weather would be important to get folks going back and forth. Eliminates the disruption of 500 employees on City Center's elevators in the morning. You can imagine the congestion of trying to push 500 people through the front door, along with residents and other users, up and down an elevator of a, I would say, old building. This is an adaptive reuse project, so we're trying to deal with the infrastructure that was given to us. Here allows us to expand on that. And eliminates conflicts during Virginia Street events. We think certainly many of these employees after work will go participate in these events. But for some of them, who have to go home and catch their kid's soccer game, or go home and start dinner, or get on the road over the hill for a weekend, they can use this space back and forth. But it does not at all, you know, encourage folks to get in their car versus take advantage of the downtown amenities. So that's the purpose and intent. We also have a map here that says, "Where are skyways not allowed?" And you can see here in gray, this is in code of where projects and skyways are not allowed. This is outside of that gray area. So we're in an area which is allowed under code. We meet the project intent of code. So we were comfortable submitting this application and going through the process. So here is the initial proposal, not the proposal I'm talking about tonight, but the initial one. The developer said, "All right, what makes Reno? What do people love about downtown? How can we incorporate incorporate existing bridges, existing walkways in downtown to this site?" So they came up with the Wingfield Bridge and said, "Let's use some of those wood trusses. Let's add some flower pots and some hanging landscaping" and incorporated into the plaza and really try to bring the river feel to this area of town. As required, we went to the Downtown Design Review Committee, which of course Commissioner Johnson is a member of. And the first thing I told this client when they approached me about this proposal, I said, "There was one that was recently moved through this process up at UNR and became very controversial." And why did it become controversial? Because they exempted themselves out of the Downtown Design Review Committee. We said, "Absolutely not. We don't want an exemption. We want to go to this committee and see if we got it right. And if we didn't, we'll fix it and make sure we get it right." So I went to the Downtown Design Review Committee in December of last year and got some great feedback, a lot of feedback. And the staff report points out really two big issues. One, better safety, that this bridge, this pedestrian walkway, should be enclosed. Also, protection from the elements. Again, if we're saying we want to make sure we keep move people back and forth in all times of the year, it should again be enclosed. And three, precipitation management. You know, we have a lot of snow, we have wind, we have rain. How's that being managed in the design? And also, there was some negativity on the hanging flower pots, because you have to put water in those pots. The water will drip. Is that going to drip on the car or drip on the person? And so we could do a lot better with the safety aspects. And two, aesthetic changes to more cohesively blend into the surrounding area. You're going from Harris, a gray building, you're going to Whitney Peak Garage, a gray building. A wood bridge was, in the design committee's mind, really not compatible with the location. So what did we do? We delayed the application. You can see I went there in December. Today is April. We hired a new architecture design team. Mr. Nelson behind me and his group hired them, paid them $45,000 and said, "Hey, you need to redesign this bridge, and here is your guiding principles." The Downtown Design Review Skyway, excuse me, the Skyway Design Guidelines, as well as the minutes from the Design Review Committee. Here's your two documents. Incorporate from the committee what they said, incorporate the design guidelines, and let's make it right. So you can see here, now we have a 232-foot semi-enclosed pedestrian bridge, brushed concrete floor, slanted metal roof, concrete curbs to collect precipitation, decorative railing and metal meshing for safety. Colors blend into the neutral buildings at both connections now, and the concrete columns will have murals. You can see here on the top picture, there's existing murals on the parking garage at Whitney Peak, really cool. There'll also be a mural going on the north facade of the Harris Building, also will be very cool. And the columns along this pedestrian walkway will also have murals from local artists. So really tying in the downtown art scene into this proposal. And finally, staff. Staff is recommending approval. I work closely with Nathan. I appreciate his time. I know we had concerns about the proposal. After we went to the Design Review Committee, I think we've addressed all of their concerns. And before you now is, I believe, a very sleek, modern, eye-pleasing, safe connection to move, you know, upwards of 400 to 500 people back and forth for our corporate headquarters in downtown Reno. And again, Mr. Nelson is here to answer any specific design questions. So master plan policies, we focus on these a lot. Substantial compliance with all master plan policies are needed. It's pretty fun tonight. I don't get to hit on some of these bullet points that I've hit on other projects. Creating a modern office environment, this is it. Just like City Hall here has a connection to the parking garage next door. Now, it's not a long connection, but it's a little connection. But again, people want to be able to move in internal infrastructure from where they work to a parking garage. You know, where I work downtown, at the US Bank Building, there's a connection to the parking garage. It's needed, especially for a lot of employees in downtown urban areas. Urban revitalization, definitely check that box for revitalizing this building and really the center of downtown Reno. Public safety, we incorporated the concerns from the design committee about safety. Improved parking, parking is deficient at the parking garage. We don't want a bunch of on-street parking downtown. I'm sure we'll get calls from, you know, montage and other condominium holders, so we're putting folks into a garage. Connectivity and access, absolutely. Reuse of a downtown property, yes. Varied building heights and forms to create visual interest. I believe, our architect believes that there is a visual interest with the redesign of this pedestrian walkway. And also equitable planning to ensure ADA compliant structure for ease of access for people with disabilities. This pedestrian walkway will move folks from the parking garage right into the offices at City Center. So I would say the process worked. I know there's been some, a flaw in this process with prior proposals, but I think it works. We did it. There's a map that shows where these aren't allowed. We're not there. There's a design review committee that says how to design this correctly. We followed that. We followed their lead. We're increasing the economic viability of the project. This is a large-scale project. We're improving pedestrian safety and pedestrian comfort. Certainly, the purpose of intent says this is an opportunity when you have all these different components to move forward with a really neat project, and we think we checked the box for all of those purpose and intent guidelines. And finally, part of the record, I submitted it today. We do have a letter from Clear Capital. Hope all of you received a copy. I won't read the whole thing, but it is really exciting to finally have large-scale company moving downtown. We're losing companies, right? West Elm just announced that they're leaving, right? We don't want to have another vacant, blighted, not interesting downtown. We want employees downtown. We want people spending money downtown and enjoying downtown. So Clear Capital, right from the letter, said, "We are excited to bring our 500 employees to the heart of downtown Reno as the city continues to grow and flourish." And here it is. "The pedestrian walkway is critical to the relocation of our corporate headquarters, and we urge your support." So urge you tonight to support this move by Clear Capital, the vision of Reno City Center, and myself and Mr. Nelson are here for any questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Garrett. I believe we have a presentation from Nathan via Zoom.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I believe Garrett's presentation is still up on the screen. I'll try again. Commissioners, can you all see the presentation?
We can.
Okay, fantastic. Nathan Gilbert, senior planner, for the record. This is LDC 2223 Reno City Center Skyway. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a skyway, a pedestrian bridge over used commercial road. Zoning is mixed-use downtown entertainment district, and the master plan is downtown mixed-use. Key issues in staff analysis were project design and safety and compatibility with the surrounding area. A little bit of background on this. City design standards came out of, you know, basically casinos incorporating skyways in the 1990s. And design standards were adopted in the year 2000. The Reno City Center renovation to commercial mixed-use residential and commercial is currently underway under building permits. There's direct access from existing parking garage to the new offices that are proposed, as Garrett mentioned. And the skyways are allowed, subject to review and recommendation by the Design Review Committee and the Planning Commission. Ultimately, this will be a city council decision. The design was modified from the original open trust design, as Garrett mentioned, incorporating feedback from the Design Review Committee. Revisions incorporate Design Review Committee and NAB comments specifically relating to public safety concerns and overall design. The cover of bridge design addresses this with precipitation management and color palette matching the surrounding buildings. There is restricted access, security and maintenance as conditioned. Also lighting plan and murals on the columns. Overall, it's a 232-by-11-foot semi-enclosed bridge. The majority spans over the existing private plaza. That's the former Harris Plaza. There are separate permits to enhance that plaza area. Columns are all on private property. There are concrete floors. It is proposed as a slanted metal roof with decorative railing and powder-coated mesh, giving the overall open feel with the enclosed design. Overall, there are three existing sky bridges in the vicinity. This would, you know, as this is next to the Virginia Street Arch, there could be special event conflicts. Condition recommended would be to prohibit loitering on the site. That's reflecting neighborhood advisory board comments, and signs are restricted on the exterior. Overall, no general public comment was received. There were three NAB comments and Design Review Committee minutes included in your staff report. Staff can make applicable findings and supports Planning Commission recommendations to City Council to approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, disclosures, and we will start with Commissioner Johnson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and was a member of the Skyway Design Review Committee that has looked at this already.
Commissioner Dragic visited the site with the applicant.
Commissioner Valtto, same disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower visited the site with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
We received one correspondence email that was forwarded to the Planning Commission, and it is part of the record. I did not receive any voicemails for this item, and I did not receive any request to speak forums for this item.
Okay, well, closed public comment and bring it back to Commissioners for questions of Nathan or of Mr. Gordon. Questions? Discussion? Motion? Mr. Johnson?
I'm trying to figure out if I have a question or discussion. Why did you start with me?
You're leaning in.
I guess I'll ask a question of the applicant, Garrett. So appreciate the presentation, and I do want to state on the record that I concur with everything that was said during the presentation with respect to bringing the comments from the Skyway Design Review Committee into what we're seeing here tonight. I didn't see anything that was discussed in the meeting that wasn't addressed in some way. So I will definitely concur with that and appreciate the work that was done there. I do have a question. I guess with respect to some of these policies that we're looking at, and maybe it, actually, it may even be a question for Nathan. I'll get back to you, Garrett. I'm sorry I brought you up too quick.
No problem.
Let me ask you, Nathan. So Nathan, when I'm looking at the findings that are listed in the staff report, they're basically, it seems to me that by and large, these are tied to the actual development of the City Center project itself, the redevelopment of the site, the, you know, modern office environment, some of the ones that the applicant brought up. They're tied very much to the overall project rather than to the skyway. So I guess the question from my standpoint to staff is, are you making the, are you reviewing these and looking at them in the sense that the skyway is an integral part of this overall development? Or is the skyway, you know, is the overall development happening and the skyway just is a part of that, and that's why the findings are being applied to the skyway? I think that I form that as a question.
Yeah, this is a conditional use permit to allow the skyway. Of course, it is tied to the overall development. Funding commission and City Council decision will be based on the appropriateness and overall design of the skyway itself.
Okay, so then, but so the findings that are here, though, you know, modern office environment, I guess I'm looking at that in terms of, that's the redevelopment of the project. That's not specifically tied to the skyway, in my mind. So I'm trying to understand why staff, how staff is looking at that as a condition in approval for the skyway itself.
Well, I think you're referencing the master plan policy.
Yes.
If I'm correct.
Yes.
And certainly that would be tied to the overall proposal, and the conditions do relate to the office environment with restrictions on access to provide service for the City Center project.
Okay. And I noticed there were a couple of others that weren't identified with respect to some of the master plan conditions in terms of, you know, street-level interest and connectivity in the pedestrian realm along Virginia Street. How is staff looking at those with respect to taking people off of the street as opposed to, you know, looking, I mean, I don't see the, I don't see commercial road as a vehicular, you know, a traffic impediment from one side to the other from a safety standpoint. So I guess I'm asking how staff is looking at the fact that we have a lot of policies that talk about pedestrian, you know, activity and connectivity along, at the street level and along Virginia Street. And those would be tied to this project as well, but the skyway is kind of going away from that.
Yeah, that there is a balance with master plan policies. Code does specify that Skyways are generally encouraged if they're designed appropriately. The specific provision is 75% of the surrounding property owners meeting that criteria. I think with this particular location, given that the number of special events from spring to fall would further support that as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Nathan. And then Garrett, just now I do have a question for you. Appreciate your patience in me making you hop up and down. So I know that Clear Capital is, has an office in Reno currently. The letter that was sent to us was addressed in Reno. So how many of Clear Capital's employees are currently here as opposed to those that are proposed? Or is this just a current company that's moving into downtown? I mean, hearing a lot about this, you know, this economic development and the 500 new people, I'm just trying to understand, are these, you know, is this an entirely new group that's coming in? Or is this, you know, a company that's currently here and is moving to this desirable location?
Yeah, it's a, thank you for the question, Commissioner. Yeah, it's definitely a hybrid maneuver. There have currently some offices here in Reno. Those employees will be moving over. They have some folks relocating from the Bay Area to move here. There's certainly not 500 Clear Capital employees in Reno today, but there will be downtown, and this proposal was instrumental to their decision to move downtown.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower? Nope. Discussion? Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just to add to the discussion, if I could, following up on Commissioner Johnson, that was a concern of mine was the competing master plan. Priorities in terms of, you know, street activation and walkability and the potential for this proposal to take pedestrians off the street. I think that's a general consideration for, you know, Skyways and, you know, in general. But it was interesting to hear staff's take on it in terms of that's something that's encouraged in downtown Reno. And I think the way the applicant presented it in terms of, you know, it's like a package deal, right? With the city center lease with the adjacent parking garage, it kind of all fits together. So, you know, based on that information, I'm certainly comfortable now being able to make that master plan finding. But I do think that is a consideration, not that we see Skyways all the time, but, you know, we do want to activate the street space too with pedestrians. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower, and I will just add, I think that because this is really for the internal use of employees, there's going to be a key card. We're not taking people off of the street and putting them up above. It's to move people within the employment center and their parking. So I can make those findings too. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. In the matter of LDC 22-00023, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Gower, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just as a point of discussion, and I appreciate the comment, I would, I think in my mind, I would disagree with the idea that we're, you know, not taking people off of the street. I think, you know, this is a parking garage that is across Commercial Row, which is not a busy street into an incredibly well-thought-out plaza. So I do think that this is, you know, it's something that is being done that is actually, in my mind, looking at the master plan policies, this is an opportunity for us to bring an entity downtown and have those people down here. And I think having coffee shops and bakeries and bars and things for before and after work that are there, we want to encourage as many people to go into that as possible, and I think the rest of this project is doing that. So I'm looking at the policies, and I certainly appreciate the comments and the comments from Nathan, but I just really, I think I'm far more interested in the urban development and the walkability that they're creating elsewhere in this project. And I do, in my mind, feel like this is detracting from that, and that's where, that's the master plan policy that I'm having a hard time getting around. So in terms of prioritizing, I look at the priorities of getting people on the street and encouraging and activating that space, and anything we're doing that takes away from that, I have a problem with that from a master plan standpoint. So that's the finding that I cannot make, and I appreciate the discussion about it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I will also add a comment that this process went a lot smoother than the last one that we saw, and I think that has a lot to do with the Skyway Design Review Committee. So appreciate all the folks that put input into that and worked on that. We have a motion and a second. Michelle, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Draculich?
Yes.
Gower?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Munoz?
Yes.
Velto?
Yes.
The motion is five to one and one absent.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. And I would say thank you, Garrett, but I think we're gonna see you again real soon. Okay, we'll move on to item number 6.7. This is, let's see here, case number LDC 22-00045 Meridian 120 South Open Space. This is a request for a master plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. Do we have a presentation, Mr. Gordon, looks like?
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Garrett Gordon, tonight representing BT South, who's the applicant and property owner.
Sorry, Garrett, can you bring the mic closer to you?
Is that better? Hello?
Try it again.
Testing. Hello? Okay. Okay, thank you. So again, for the record, Garrett Gordon, tonight on behalf of BT South, there's two agenda items I'll be presenting on. This is the first of two, relates back to the Meridian 120 South project, and I think I'm stuck. There we go. Thank you. So this, the next item relates to the Meridian 120 South tentative map. You can see this tentative map was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council on June 10th of 2020, two years ago. You can see what was approved. Six villages, two villages totaling 75 units. Villages three and four, which we'll talk a lot about tonight, which are zoned arterial commercial, located just along the south side of I-80, and are planning for much-needed triplexes, some denser product in the city of Reno. And villages five and six for 261 units. So NRS 278 says that after you get a tentative map approved, in order to move forward, you need to record a final map within four years. After the final map is recorded, you submit building plans, pull a building permit, and start constructing. So our tentative map was approved in June of 2020 by the Reno City Council. Therefore, we need to satisfy 31 conditions in order to present a final map to city staff by June 10th of 2024. So why am I here tonight? And why aren't we building homes yet? What have we been doing for the last 20 months? If you don't mind moving that screen up so I can hit the last two points. What's happened in the last 20 months? While we could have been building homes, including these triplexes during a housing shortage. Well, one, we've been participating in numerous stakeholder meetings to amend the Mortenson-Garson Neighborhood Plan, known as M-God. This will be discussed in the next agenda item. We participated in good faith for two years, numerous meetings in order to amend that document, which was a condition to this map as well. We'll talk about the next agenda item. But that process was canceled last year, so nothing came out of it after two years of work and effort. And two, what else did we do? Successfully defended, with the city of Reno's help, litigation by the Verdi Group. The Verdi residents, even after approval of the tentative map, and you'll hear about some conditions, next agenda item, that were purportedly sacred conditions, but they sued anyway. They sued with those conditions, and tonight I'm going to ask you to amend those conditions. What happened with that litigation? Judge Freeman denied the petition and said the City Council absolutely made the right decision based on the findings. That was decided in August 19th, 2021. Residents have appealed that to Nevada Supreme Court in an end run to run out our four-year clock. Well, developers are not waiting anymore. We need to move forward. We need to build some homes for this community and build some triplexes for this community. So tonight, I'm asking you to satisfy one condition on this agenda item, and next agenda item to amend two conditions, so we can satisfy all conditions and start moving forward with our tentative map and start building homes. On this agenda item, I'm asking you, under condition number 28, we were required, prior to applying for a final map, to rezone 8.3 acres of industrial commercial to open space. So we're asking you tonight to downzone a portion of the project. Why? Because this was one conditions, one condition out of 31 that were bundled together, where the City Council and court said we met all findings and mitigated all impacts. You can see it also requires a City Council hearing for that rezoning, so we'll go up to them next. So that's all this agenda item is before you, is me asking to downzone, you can see on the left, the left-hand corner, some industrial zone property to open space in an effort to satisfy this condition. And of course, I'll be asking to move, amend two additional conditions, the next agenda item, given this is all the same project. So zoning map, industrial commercial to open space, also not downzoning, but downmaster planning from mixed employment to open space. This body makes a recommendation, and then City Council will make the decision. And because there's a master plan amendment, this will go up to regional as well. So I ask you to downzone my client's property tonight to satisfy this condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. You did not get your remaining 10 minutes on the next agenda item, just FYI. Thank you. Nathan, do we have, do you have a presentation?
We do. If we could ask that the previous presentation be removed? All right. I trust you can all see this presentation. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner. As Garrett mentioned, this is an 8.3-acre zone change and master plan amendment of an overall 80.64-acre parcel. The request is to go from mixed employment to park screenways and open space. The request for rezoning to industrial commercial to park screenway and open space as well. So a little bit of background, in June 2020, council approved the Meridian 120 South Villages 1 through 6. And they added the condition number 28, requiring a zone change from industrial commercial to the park screenway and open space. You can see in this graphic, the site does sit on a hillside. In the original NGOD plan, it was planned for a light industrial type of use. Council required that this be returned to open space. This does require a corresponding master plan amendment to facilitate that. Overall compatibility, park screenway, open space, master plan and zoning is consistent with the surrounding designations and will be deemed restricted per code standards. We did not receive any public comment on this request, and staff can make the applicable findings and supports of Planning Commission recommendations to City Council to approve the master plan and zoning map amendment to open space. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Disclosures, commissioners. Bless you, Commissioner Johnson.
I believe Commissioner Johnson is familiar with the site. I don't believe we received any correspondence on this item specifically.
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site, met with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Munoz, I'm familiar with the site, and don't believe I got any emails on this.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site and met with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site and met with the applicant's representative. Do we have any public comment on this item, Michelle?
I did not receive any request to speak forms. We did receive an email that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered into the record, and no voicemails were received.
Okay, we will close public comment on this item and ask commissioners for questions or comments, discussion. Commissioner Velto, motion?
I'm ready to make a motion. In the matter of LDC 22-00045, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend that City Council adopt the master plan and zoning map amendment, subject to a conformance review by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Draculich, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Just for clarification really quick, and Nathan, you can answer this, or Jason, you can answer this. This part, this is for, sorry, I should have answered this earlier, but these conditions for this agenda item and the next agenda item were requested by council, right?
The master plan, the zoning map amendment was a condition of approval for the tentative map, which was a condition of approval by the City Council.
Okay.
This also required, yeah, it requires a master plan amendment, and that's where this request is coming from.
Okay, thanks, because I'm probably going to ask the same question again on the next agenda item. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Garrett, we'll open item 6.8. This is a possible action recommendation to City Council for case number LDC 21-00038 Meridian 120 South, conditions of improvement, conditions of amendment, sorry. This is a request to amend two conditions of approval associated with Meridian 120 South Villages 1 and 6.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Garrett Gordon, again, representing BT South LLC. We're again speaking about Meridian 120 South development, and the request before you is to, as I mentioned earlier, we need to amend or satisfy three of these conditions in order to move forward with the final map. So these last two conditions require amendment. Again, so the record's clear, we're again talking about Meridian 120 South tentative map. It was approved on June 10th, 2020. You can see Villages 1 and 2 were approved for 75 units. Villages 5 and 6 were approved for 261 units. And I should note that the tentative map has already been approved. All findings have been made by this body and City Council, and the courts upheld that approval. So we're not relitigating whether or not there's schools or fire or infrastructure. That's been approved. Tonight, we're asking you, if you look at the second bullet point, in order to modify two conditions in order to allow us to develop the 285 residential units in the arterial-zoned area, the triplexes. It was important to council that this was a project that had a variety of densities. You can see 5 and 6, 1 and 2, single-family residences. The 3 and 4, the higher-density product, the missing middle that this community desperately needs, is why we're asking for your help tonight. So as mentioned, 32 conditions of approval associated with our tentative map approval. It is impossible for us to comply with conditions 4 and 31. So that's why I'm before you tonight. If we don't change conditions 4 and 31, there's not a project. If we don't change conditions four and 31, there's not a project. Let's start with number 31. It's not necessary and impossible to satisfy. How? Condition number eight, which I'm not asking you to change, which is currently a condition and will stay a condition, says we're required to have a secondary remote emergency access by the 256th residence. That was approved by the fire marshal back in 2020. And the fire marshal was here and can share, can share, speak for himself, for himself on that. It's important to go back to 2020 and you can see on the right-hand side here, this project was the first one proposed in this planning area. This body has heard Santera to the west of us, has since come before this body, been approved for a tentative map. And just recently, the planning commission approved a special use permit for grading to Quilsey Ranch Road. But back in 2020, you can see on this map, the dashed line on the left-hand side, there was no alignment yet. And it was unknown what that would look like. The fire marshal said, well, so long as you have secondary remote access by the 256 residents, but as long, excuse me, as long as you have that secondary remote access completed by the 256 residents, staff recommends approval. At the hearing, the city council added an additional condition. They said, because you're the first out here, could you try to get some temporary emergency access in the meantime? And what does that look like? You can see the dotted line up, up on top of this map, or it shows the I-80 sign. City council said, can you go talk to NDOT, can you go talk to the highway, federal highway administration and see if you can connect to 80? We agreed, the condition was put on, and we've talked to them. And I'll show you an email in a second. They said, no go. You can't do it. So not only is it impossible to satisfy that condition, but now it's not necessary. Because now the actual road alignment is approved on the Santera tentative map. The special use permit has already been approved by this body for grading. And for some of you who visited the site, I know you've seen construction has commenced. So not only are we confident we can build 256 units without secondary access as approved in condition number eight, we're confident that access is probably going to be there as, as far as how things have gone with this proposal, probably by the first unit because Santera is way ahead of us, given our two-year delay. So we're asking to delete condition number 31. City staff agrees. Staff report says the fire marshal concurs. You can see the email here back in 2020, July 2020, so right after our approval from NDOT that says, NDOT followed up with the federal highway administration regarding the proposed location for secondary urgency access required by city of Reno. Unfortunately, they do not concur with the additional break in control of access at the weigh station. Therefore, it's impossible and it's not necessary. So we respectfully ask you to remove condition 31 tonight. Number two, request relates to condition number four. This condition is also impossible to satisfy. This condition relates directly to villages three and four and the 285 missing middle triplexes residential units that this community desperately needs. What does this condition say? Before recording a final map on these villages, the applicant shall either amend the Mortenson Garson overlay district standards through a text amendment process, or have a mutual agreement with other planning areas to acquire units. Well, as I mentioned earlier, on the early agenda item, the M God text amendment process that was initiated in response to this condition has been canceled. I have an email from staff, it's on the record, December 2021, that process is dead. A text amendment can't be proposed by an applicant. A text amendment can only be proposed by city council or this planning commission. But for all intents and purposes, the one that was proposed is now canceled. So we cannot meet that condition. Mutual agreement, there is no mutual agreement between us and any other developer in the planning areas to acquire units. That's why it says mutually agreed upon. It doesn't say we shall go buy from Mr. Developer. It says Mr. Mutual Agreement to go try to acquire units. There's no mutual agreement from other property owners, so that condition is also impossible to satisfy. So we're asking you tonight to delete this condition in its entirety, or alternatively, I put some language in my request, it's here in red in the staff report, is another option. Basically, it deletes the condition, or if you want an explanation why you're deleting the condition, it's outlined in the staff report, which basically will allow us to build our 285 units. So what supports deleting this condition? 300, 3,000 unit cap, you're going to hear that tonight. Well, we can't delete this condition. We can't give you 285 units for triplexes because you'll go over the cap. Well, let's look at exactly what M God says about the cap. You can see at table 2-40, development potential by planning area, there's three planning areas. Land use designation for each of those planning areas as relates to residential land use designations. And how many dwelling units are allowed for each of those land use designations? You can see it varies depending on the land use designation. If you add up that third column, it equals 3,000 units. Very straightforward. If you're going to try to develop residential in one of these land use designations, you can't go over not only the subcategory or the sub-dwelling unit cap, but the overall cap. The issue is the villages for the triplexes are zoned arterial commercial. There is no cap for arterial commercial zoning for residential units. Villages three and four, the 285 triplexes are zoned arterial commercial, were previously zoned hotel commercial. So it's not as if I'm trying to do a bait and switch and say it was residential, what arterial commercial and taking advantage of the system. It was hotel commercial, arterial commercial, there's no cap. Thus, the 3,000 unit cap should not be applied to condition number four for the 285 units because we're zoned arterial commercial and do not exceed the cap. You can see the map in the lower right-hand corner, AC is our property on I-80. You might hear tonight, well, if we allow this to happen, then it's proverbial camel's nose under the tent. We're going to have just a water fountain of units in AC. No, there's two other properties zoned AC. You can see to the north. One is Cabela's, already developed, has, has bonds on it. There's no way it could convert to residential. Also, the other AC is the campground, currently campground, currently has a business license for a campground, no plans for residential. But you're going to ask me, well, what prohibits Mr. Camp owner from coming and asking for units? They would have to file a tentative map, come before this body with a tentative map, and also ask for a special use permit if they want to go over a threshold of units. So we're not setting any kind of precedent here for any other AC because my client has a tentative map, my client has a special use permit. You've just taken action on a condition prior to this that shows we're now vested in our conditions of approval by downzoning our property, which has, which, there's no way you can set a precedent, given that fact pattern for the other two AC. So the 3,000 unit doesn't, cap doesn't apply. So what can go in arterial commercial, right? That begs the question. Well, if you're not capped at residential units, what can go in there? Here I quote right from M God. Uses permitted within each zoning district shall be those identified in Title 18. We're AC, so what uses are permitted in Title 18 for AC? Multifamily, residential, townhomes, triplexes. But to go over 100 units, you need a special use permit. We have a special use permit. We met the findings for a special use permit for 285 units in villages three and four. But you might say, well, was there any thought given the putting prohibiting residential in AC? Right here, uses permitted within each zoning district shall be those in Title 18, except for the following shall be prohibited. Auto repair, adult business, single-room occupancy, plaza centers, outdoor manufacturing, tattoo parlor, cremations, billboards. There is no letter N that says residential units. There's no prohibition on residential units in AC. They clearly could have put in a prohibition under N for residential and tied it back to this cap, but they didn't. So 285 triplexes are clearly allowed in arterial commercial with a special use permit. We have a special use permit for these units. So we're asking you to delete condition number four. Bigger picture, how is this tied in to all of the conditions of approval? Well, I just voluntarily downzone my client's property as part of the package deal. What's also part of the package deal? Condition number 27, we're donating three acres, almost three acres of land for a fire station for free. And not only are we doing that, we agreed how to operate it. A voluntarily, a voluntary $1,608 assessment for, I quote, fire facilities, towards fire facilities or equipment to serve this project to help meet the findings for all the tentative map. Well, if condition number four isn't removed, which is impossible, and we can't do 285 units, then $458,200 can't go towards fire. So now there's a deficit by the city of Reno. Who's going to pick that up? If we can scramble and do the other units somehow, what are we going to do for that deficit? City of Reno has to pick it up. That's a developer-driven condition that says we're trying to mitigate our impacts concurrently with the impacts and paying a half million dollars to help fund the fire station without keeping condition number four and killing our 285 units, no fire station and no ability to operate it. So you look at the last section of M God, and here is the 3,000 units. You can see number one, the 3,000 unit cap. It says the total amount of dwelling units resulting from any change in density shall not exceed, excuse me, 3,000 units. If that was a period, I don't think I could stand up here today with a straight face. But it also says, and 300 commercial acres cumulatively for all the properties in M God. So for all the properties in M God, you get 300, 3,000 units in residentially zoned areas. You get 300 commercial acres of what's allowed in Title 18, so long as you're not on that prohibited list, and you can move forward. So we can remove condition number four because we're in commercial, we're zoned AC, and we can move and allow under Title 18 for 285 triplexes. But also, there's another option. Number three says you can increase density by a maximum of 10% in conjunction with the tentative map and conditional use permit. We have both of those as well. So in addition to, in addition, density increase of 10%. So if you want to say there is this cap and 10% increase is 300 units, our 285 fit in that box very nicely as well. So either of these options support the deletion of condition number four. So request the motion that we delete condition number 31 because it's no longer, it's impossible to satisfy. And then number two, to construct our 285 triplex project during a housing shortage, delete condition number four because it's impossible to satisfy because one, the 3,000 unit cap does not apply to the 300 commercial acres. This is supported by the residential land use designation. Or you can apply the 10% density increase and it still gets us to 285 units. And you could, again, delete condition four in its entirety, or if you wanted to build a record, which I know is important for this body, in red in your staff report, it says, in accordance with M God, the uses permitted within arterial commercial shall be those identified in the Reno Municipal Code, which currently has no maximum residential density resulting in unlimited units in AC. The applicant shall, however, shall not have unlimited number of residential units and shall be capped to 285 in those two villages. We're not trying to go above 285. We're just trying to comply with what was approved with our tentative map and upheld by the courts. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Nathan, do we, do you have a presentation, please?
We can't hear you, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, planning commissioners, Nathan Gilbert, senior planner for the record. I don't have a formal PowerPoint presentation. I think Garrett covered the request sufficiently. Regarding condition number 31, regarding the temporary secondary access, that was not a city staff or fire department recommendation. That was added as a condition of approval from the city council. And Trey Palmer, I believe, is in attendance to address any, any questions that you have on that. There will be secondary access with the 256 unit in planning area three as a total that includes the Meridian 120 South projects as well as the Santera. So secondary access is, would remain per condition number eight. This condition number 31 relates specifically to a temporary emergency secondary access that was added by the city council. Regarding condition number four, staff's position is outlined in your staff report would be to clarify that the use is allowed in the arterial commercial. This is standard code, but the recommendation would be as submitted in your staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Nathan. Commissioners, we'll start with disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Gower because I can't remember which side we started with last time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I visited the site, met with applicant's representative, received and read emails and corresponded with members of the community.
Commissioner Munoz, I read and responded to emails, previously visited the site and had some correspondence with applicant's representative.
Commissioner Velto, I visited the site, spoke to the applicant's representative, received correspondence from Mrs. McNeil, was not able to get back to you and I apologize for that. And also received and reviewed emails.
Commissioner Dracula, read and received emails, visited the site with the applicant, have spoken to residents and attended a Verde Community Council several months ago when this came up. That's it.
Commissioner Johnson, I received and read the emails, corresponded with both the applicant's representative and members of the public and am familiar with the site.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. And we do have public comment for this item. We'll start with the public comment that is here tonight. I think we have a couple presentations. Just as a reminder, we'll have three minutes for each public comment. And I apologize if I do not get these in the order, but I believe the first one is Ed with the PowerPoint presentation. Is it Koffer?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's a PowerPoint presentation. Ed will be followed by Addie. And then Alice and Deanne, all with PowerPoint presentations.
Thank you. My name is Ed Koffer. I live in Verde at 605 Deer Mountain Road. I represent the Society for the Preservation of Verde. And before I start, I would like the record to reflect that Meridian 120 South is in active litigation before the Nevada Supreme Court. Tonight is very, very simple. We're getting confused with a smokescreen by our illustrious council for the developer. The reality is they're entitled to the use, but they're not entitled to the number of units that they're requesting. Condition four is a regulatory mandate by the city that acknowledges that, that M G O D has a $15,000 dwelling cap. BT South and the council are confused. RMC does not trump M G O D. According to Angela Fuss, in her transcript from the Stan Lucas Project, she stated, and I'd like to read it to you and read it into the record, M Gog is very specific language that trumps the code. So there's, if there's a discrepancy between the code, what the code says and M G O D says, we need to follow M G O D. And M G O D clearly states 3,000 unit cap, doesn't matter how you The court agreed with Ms. Fuss and remanded Stan Lucas back to the city with the order that the city follow MGOD that was in effect at the time the application was filed. So it's clear, they're not entitled to any more units than 3,000. It's undisputed that MGOD still rules the Meridian South properties. Nothing has changed. These were the rules when they first submitted it, and these are the rules they have to follow through the conclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Koffer. And now we have Addie.
Can you hear me?
Can you move the mic? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. Addie Argerus, speaking against Meridian South, condition four. Contrary to what council said, Meridian South is subject to the 3,000 cap. Commercial zoning has been changed to residential zoning, which is subject to density. Residential units are dwelling units. This is a classic change in density, subject to the 3,000 dwelling unit cap that is in code. Should as best practice, shall as mandatory. Both the staff report and the approval letter state, "Projects shall comply with all codes at submission. Codes in effect at submission shall prevail." Meridian South is bound to the 3,000 cap regardless of added conditions or changes to the MGOD code. It's a circular argument. It is not rocket science. BT South and their council are confused. Their change request argues that RMC has no limit on units in AC zoning. RMC is irrelevant. Meridian is under the MGOD, which has a 3,000 dwelling unit cap. The use comes from RMC, but the number comes from the MGOD. AC zoning allows 100 dwelling units. This project wants 285. This is an increase that is greater than 25% and requires additional procedures that are spelled out in the MGOD code that counselor just had up on screen. The staff report does not address these procedures and continues to rely on a change in the code, which cannot legally be applied to Meridian South. You cannot condition compliance with codes. You cannot change code to fit a project. Codes in effect at submission shall prevail. The 3,000 rules. Council's interpretation of MGOD is completely wrong. It's 3,000. If you increase density in one area, you decrease density in another. And the text amendment is on hold per an email from Angela Fuss sent April 19 at 8:47 PM. It's on hold. And I have to say, I have stood up here numerous times telling this developer and the city of Reno to follow the MGOD codes. As a CPA, I have to follow code of ethics, and so does the city. You have to follow the codes in effect at the time an application is submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alice House.
Good evening. I'm Alice House. I live in Belli Ranch in Verdi. The MGOD code is code. It states, "Any change in density shall not exceed dwelling units in total." Meridian South is bound by the MGOD code. The city overturned the planning commission's denial and approved Meridian 3 and 4 with a regulatory mandate of condition four. The city has already been told by the court to follow the MGOD as it existed at the time of the application. MGOD property owner Stan Lucas lost at the city but won at the court because the city completely misapplied the MGOD. MGOD trumps RMC, states the city employee Angela Fuss. This is from the city's transcript for Stan Lucas. The 3,000 cap was code when Meridian South was submitted. Meridian South has to be reviewed under the MGOD that was in effect at the time of submission. The 3,000 cap stands. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Deanne Radcliffe.
Good evening, members of the Reno City Planning Commission. Thank you very much for your dedication of service to all residents of Northern Nevada. My name is Deanne Radcliffe, and I've been fortunate to live in Verdi for most of my life. I had the privilege of serving on the Washoe County Citizens Advisory Board 20 years ago during the time of the Mortenson-Garson lawsuit. As you are likely aware, the city of Reno development resulted from Verdi property owners suing to be part of the city of Reno instead of Washoe County so they could develop their properties with increased density. Boomtown was party to the lawsuit, and Reno Land, of course, purchased the land and created the Meridian Projects. Over the years, I have attended many meetings, and I'm questioning why this issue is even being brought forth. As I came down to City Hall to speak on this issue tonight, I'm struggling. I am here requesting that all of the promises, mandates, and assurances that Verdi residents were promised are honored. I am saddened that I have to be kept away from my family and provide public comment and hope that those promises are kept. I am blessed with three children, and thought of the following analogy regarding Meridian 120 requesting additional units beyond the 3,000 cap. My youngest arrives at the table and is ready to have breakfast. I made brownies the night before. He asks if he can have a brownie for breakfast instead of oatmeal. Of course, the answer is no. I inform him this is not an option for breakfast, and this is what I feel like is happening with a request to change condition four. The development in Meridian 120 is the product of a lawsuit, or if you prefer, a contract. This contract limited development to 3,000 dwelling units. As you shall note, as you know, code, sorry, I'm a slide extra, I think. Okay. As you note, code does not state that Meridian 120 can exceed the cap. Rather, density shall not exceed the 3,000. As projects need to be compliant with code at this time of submission, why is this request even being forwarded? The Meridian 120 project remains in litigation with the Nevada Supreme Court. As I reiterated to council during one of the text amendment meetings, I was privileged to be part of that, too, the 3,000 cap is set in stone. Or if you would like a nearby reference, it's concreted in like our space wheel, right? It's not going to go anywhere. It is not negotiable or able to be changed. This profit-driven request is not good for the community and must be denied as it violates code. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And next is Ken McNeil.
Well, good evening, Planning Commission. This is a very disturbing motion being proposed. I guess you'd call it a motion. I've been to a lot of meetings, and so have all these other people, where we've talked about the cap. It's always been 3,000. And there's never been, well, if you do this, you can change that 3,000. If you modify something, that somehow you can change that. No, it's 3,000. And I would think that Mr. Gordon would be able to present tonight some kind of case law to where he could reference that this is a possibility, and he hasn't done that. Surely, there must be some kind of case law, one way or the other. I imagine there is, but he hasn't presented that. So I would say, in my opinion, because we've always been told the cap is 3,000, the cap is 3,000. And whether or not it's in another zone with a different title, you still have 3,000 residential units. That's it. And like, again, I'll say that all these meetings I've gone to, I've never heard anyone say, "Well, if you do this, you can modify that 3,000." So I would hope that you would very carefully think about what's being proposed tonight, and I would hope that the decision is to not, to deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Do we have any other public comment? Pam McNeil.
I may need you to fill out a comment card when you're done, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, Pam McNeil, but I just, I couldn't help it a little bit. I mean, as you all know, I am not an attorney. I am not a planner. But of course, we've been following this along quite a bit. One of the points that has not been hit upon, Nathan put it in his staff report, and it's not real often that Nathan and I agree on things, but I have to say I do agree on some of it, but it's the intent. Judge Draculich said, didn't agree with a lot of things she said either, but she did say that you have to rely on the handbook for intent. And the intent way back 20 years ago was they compromised on 3,000. One side wanted five, one side wanted two. It was compromised on 3,000. So I think that really needs to be adhered to. And then again, as Addie mentioned, as far as the text amendment process, Mr. Garrett addressed the NAB meeting last week and said that that's not feasible because the MGOD text amendment is not, it's not, I don't know what word it was used, but it's not happening anymore. And Angela just sent an email last night that says, "There is still pending MGOD litigation, so the text amendment is on hold, and it's not just totally discarded." Mr. Gordon said he has an email also, so there's some disagreement. The other thing that I'm just a little unclear on, again, I'm not a planner, but that project used to be Hotel Casino. And I don't know the uses that are allowed under Hotel Casino, but for some reason, Wood Rogers changed that, I think it was back in 2015, from Hotel Casino to Arterio Commercial. But again, back to intent, way back with the handbook, the settlement agreement, there was supposed to be commercial in the MGOD area on the south side of the freeway, not just the north side. And so it would be nice if people could have somewhere to go to get things and not just more people that can't get out because of the fire that, because, oh, we haven't touched on the Garson overpass yet either, but because of that. So those are just my, a couple of points that I had to make, and it's good to see everybody again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Do we have any other public comment in the audience? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
It doesn't look like anybody's raising their hand. We do have voicemails that we received. We also received correspondence on this item. They're, they were forwarded to the Planning Commission and are part of the record, so we'll transition into the voicemails now.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
My name is Robin Mose. My address is 8550 Gasparilla Way in Verdi. I'm in the Meridian 120 South, or Meridian 120, and I received a letter about emergency entrances using different streets to get into the Meridian 120 South condition. I'd like to say I don't want my street being used. I back up against the freeway, number one. Number two, if those heavy trucks are coming down the front street, it's just absolutely so full of sound, people can't stand it on this street because of the freeway itself. And then they have the big, heavy trucks coming and the rocks and all the crap that they leave and it flies around out here. They should be using the Boomtown-Garson Road entrance and go clear up to the corner and then turn left and go in instead of using the housing development entrance on the side where you take Hildago in. I'm voicing my concern. I'm protesting. My number is 925-784-3265. Thank you very much.
Yes, my name is Carrie Argerus, and I am speaking on LDC 21-00038, the Meridian request to change condition four. I am speaking against their argument in the change request that RMC allows unlimited dwelling units in the arterial commercial zoning. First, RMC on this property is irrelevant. The property is under the MGOD code. Only the use comes from RMC, but the number comes from the MGOD, and the developer has to have the number of units available. Second, arterial commercial zoning allows 100 dwelling units. If more are wanted, the developer has to have special permission, hence the SUP on this project. This developer wants 285. This is an increase that is greater than 25% from the 100 units allowed. It requires additional procedures that are set out in the MGOD code. The staff recommendation requires the developer show they have the number of dwelling units, but it does not include the additional procedures required by code to increase the number by greater than 25%. Staff's recommendation falls short of what the code requires for Meridian 3 and 4 to be compliant with the MGOD code. Thank you.
I'm calling in regards to project number LDC 21-00038, the MGOD project. My name is Dennis Bennett. I live in Verdi at 155 Wedgewood Drive, P.O. Box 1234, Verdi, 89439. I am expressing my concerns and wish to limit the amount of building on this project and not approve further access to the interstate.
Hi, this is Joanne Regan. I'm a Verdi resident, and this call is concerning project number LDC 21-00038, the Mortenson, well, it's the MGOD. I feel that the city of Reno Planning Commission should adhere to the rules set forth in the MGOD. I know that the applicant is wanting to change those rules or even delete them. Also, they said, the applicant said they had heard from NDOT that they could not supply a second emergency access to I-80, and that they should actually provide documentation that they did indeed call NDOT to check this out. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you. Bye-bye.
And that's it for voicemails.
Okay. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions and discussion. We'll start with questions. Commissioners, who'd like to start? Commissioner Draculich.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Draculich, I guess I don't know who to ask. Maybe it's Nate, or even, I know Andy may have the answer in regards to where we are at on the total approved units at this point in regards to the 3,000 cap. How many do we have? What space is there? Just want to understand that number.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Nathan Gilbert, Senior Planner. In Planning Area 3, the total allotment allowed is 1799. With the reductions of the Santera Equilice projects, there remains 153 units in Planning Area 3 available for there remains 153 units in Planning Area Three available for development. I think it's important to note that the issue here is really not a cap or development potential. It is development allocation. And we received directions from the court regarding that to adhere to the original MGOD provisions, which allocated development potential between developers. And so this really isn't an issue of capacity in Planning Area Three. There remains capacity. There also remains multifamily 14 units per acre in the Santera Equilice portion of Planning Area Three. And that's really what the issue is when, you know, the MGOD handbook allocated specific development potential to individual property owners. And so that's the issue at hand with this condition amendment.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Looks like Garrett wants to say something, but that part I guess I understood. I guess if we say no to this project tonight, it sounds like we are not going to even get to the 3,000 mark from my understanding with other projects around us at this point. So I guess I just want to understand. I understand it's an allocation thing. Garrett, if you want to chime in, but I guess that's my point is the 3,000 units, not trying to rub right up to the top of that, but knowing we have in a housing crisis, it would be nice to get to that 3,000 units. And what happens if we say no tonight? Are we going to get there? But go ahead, Garrett, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. For the record, Garrett Gordon. So I think we're mixing a little bit of apples and oranges and different pieces of litigation. So let me try to straighten it out. Number one is Stan Lucas is Planning Area One. We are Planning Area Three. Stan Lucas litigation has nothing to do with tonight. Stan Lucas litigation did not deal with the issue that arose tonight from the 3,000-unit cap to the 300 commercial acres. The City Council denied Stan Lucas 676 lots based on City Council's decision to apply City of Reno master plan policies versus some competing MGOD policies. But it did not at all deal with this issue. So I think that's a false narrative, in my opinion, about Stan Lucas. Number two is, that's correct, Nathan, as I do the math, that there is still an additional allocation in Planning Area Three. However, it is undisputed in that table that those allocations are for the residentially zoned areas, not commercial. So when you hear tonight that the public comment stated that I somehow was trying to twist what code says or say that RMC trumps MGOD, I am just saying read MGOD on its face, and it absolutely supports what I'm asking for tonight.
Garrett, why are you still up there? In regards to the attempt at the reallocation, can you give us some more details to how that went and what those conversations were like, if any were had at all?
Sure. So on behalf of BT South, they've had conversations with Stan Lucas. There's no appetite for reallocation. They've had conversations with others in Planning Area Three. No appetite on mutual terms for allocations. You heard from Nathan that Santera has some additional multifamily units, which I believe they're planning on using at some point. And so that's why it was put in there. As I understand it, and this is supported by the text amendment that was being proposed, there was a question of whether or not you could even swap units within planning areas. So that condition gave us the option to go do so and try, but certainly didn't mandated it if the two parties couldn't come to a reasonable set of terms.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, just processing everything with that because I guess, going back to what I just said, if it's 10 years from now and we say no to this and we're short 250 units of that 3,000 and there's no fire station and, you know, parks and greenways weren't allocated because of it or whatever, I guess that's, you know, a future look that I'm, you know, considering heavily. So, thank you.
And one other clarification.
Commissioner Dracula, I just want to get a clarification, and maybe it's from Nathan or Jason. I don't think we're necessarily saying no or yes to anything. And maybe that, it's a little bit late, but we are making a recommendation to council and they're going to be saying no or yes to something.
Correct. I understand.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to ask commissioners, there's two conditions here. There's condition number four and there's condition number 31 that we are going to be talking about. Do we want to talk about condition number 31 first or condition number four first? Or is there a logical order in which we want to discuss these? Is there a preference? Commissioner Veltou.
I don't necessarily have an opinion as to which condition we take first. I think it's how I'm evaluating these conditions are, none of the findings that we made the first time we saw the project would be affected by either of the conditions. So I just hope we focus on the difference between looking at how these conditions affect our ability to make the findings and whether we could have made the findings the first time or are these conditions not in place? That's kind of how I'm evaluating it. So I think it's helpful to think about that when we're asking questions. But I don't necessarily have a preference on the order.
Does anybody have a preference on the order? I was going to, Commissioner Gower, did you have, no? Commissioner Munoz.
Commissioner Munoz, for the record, I am, for the sake of time tonight, I think maybe we get condition 31 out of the way because it's going to be less contested, I believe, in my mind anyways. And so I think maybe we get 31 out of the way and then move on to four.
I was kind of hoping that we might be able to get some fire folks out of here at a decent hour if that was possible, too. So that's where I was thinking. So do we want to ask questions on condition number 31 and see where we might want to take that? We'd like to get us started. Commissioner Munoz.
Yeah, I'll get us started. Fire Commissioner, if you could come up, please.
Good evening again. For the record, Trey Palmer, Fire Marshal.
Thank you. I'll make this quick. Obviously, you've been involved in this process for a while now, and you know what the different, the way the project has kind of changed and moved, the way the roads have gone, with the way it's proposed now and the secondary access road there. Are you, are you, do you agree with staff that everything here is in place and that condition 31 is no longer needed?
Yes, we're comfortable with what's being proposed. The only requirement we have are the two points of access. We didn't necessarily tell the developer or the applicant where to put those access points, just that they need to be remote, like we discussed on the last agenda item, and that we can access them from two different points. So what's being proposed still works for fire code.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You bet.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Gower.
Madam Chair, it's not related to condition 31, but it does relate to a question for Fire Marshal. Trey, the applicant made the point in his presentation that if the 250 or so units were not constructed at $1,600 a unit, that there would be a $450 or so thousand deficit that would have been paid into, you know, constructing and staffing that fire station. How would you respond to that?
So what I can tell you is the, I think it's 1601 or 1603, Nathan, you might have to help me on that number, per unit. Even that, at 3,000 units, it would be a very big bulk for the fire station, but it wouldn't complete the fire station. So we are going to still need excess funding by the time that fire station is built based on where construction prices are going right now. So the money will help, don't get me wrong. And that's where it's supposed to go, to build a fire station. But there's other planning that we need to look at as we move forward as well. And one of it is staffing. That's going to come out of a separate funding mechanism. So it, I guess, does that answer your question? Nothing says that the fire station is going to be concrete at the time every unit is developed in there. We have other factors, and everything depends on the economy and what's happening at the time of development completion.
And that helps. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is that if at 3,000 units, the condition, you know, stands that the fire station would be there, what the applicant is essentially asking for is 3,285 units. From your perspective, the fire station would need to be, would need to be there, and there would be a funding mechanism to do so either way.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that the funding, if you're looking at 3,000 units at 1603, that's about $4,800,000. That's not going to build us a complete station and equip everything plus staffing. So we're going to need additional funding from other sources. And again, we just don't know what that cost is going to be total until it's done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions for Trey? No, no, no. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to other questions for the applicants. Thank you very much, or of Nathan. Commissioner Veltou.
Garrett, this question might be for you. It also might be for Nathan. So I was, read through the code as it relates to MGOD, and I thought it was a little ambiguous personally, looking at the second portion about density increases and how those can exist, but also just trying to understand your argument about there being X number of units and then also land for commercial acres. So I looked at the Morrison-Garson Development Standards Handbook. So the portion of it that talks about the 3,000 units says, in effect, I'm quoting it, "The maximum density allowed by the settlement agreement is defined as existing 124 acres of commercial along the IAD corridor, up to an additional 178 acres of commercial along the IAD corridor or railroad track, and up to 3,000 residential units, which limitation does not include the 176 acres noted." So I read that as saying, as supporting your position, that the limitation on the residential units doesn't apply to the acres that are commercial. I guess my question for you is, should we be looking at this handbook if the code is clear? Or how should we evaluate both of those?
Appreciate the question and doing the additional research. So you're right, the city staff report talks about if there is ambiguity or a question, you go back and look at the original document. And so I would agree that your point, what you read, just substantiates our argument and our interpretation that residential allocation does not apply to commercial. I don't think you have to take that extra step personally because I think it's pretty clear in the table and the code. But to your point, as a very astute lawyer, let me say, that if there is ambiguity, you went back to the original document and answered your own question.
And then is there a way to read the allowance of density any other way than allowing for more than 3,000 units? Because that was my first thought, was like, I'm looking at the saying, maybe density applies to something else. What else could it apply to?
In my opinion, nothing. I mean, if you look at that number one, or it says, "The total amount of development resulting in density should not exceed 3,000 dwelling units and 300 commercial acres cumulatively for the properties in MGOD." To your point, why are we adding the 300 commercial acres and what you can do in the 300 commercial acres in that same sentence? And under that table I showed about Arterio Commercial, what you can do there, it's whatever's pursuant to Title 18, and there's a list of prohibited uses, which doesn't include residential. So I think both documents clearly point to the right answer, which is, you know, you can eliminate this condition.
Thank you.
Commissioners, question? Commissioner Gower.
Madam Chair, can I ask for staff's interpretation of that proposal?
Nathan, do you need any clarification from what Commissioner Veltou read?
Yes, please.
Sorry. Yeah, I appreciate you asking that, Commissioner Gower, because I'd like to hear your feedback on this. I can basically read both the code and the Morrison-Garson Development Standards Handbook as allowing residential, allowing, I'm sorry, creating an exception for commercial acres, saying that the 3,000 dwelling units doesn't apply for commercial acres in the MGOD. What is your understanding of this?
Yeah, staff's position is that residential would be allowed in the Arterio Commercial zone, as it would in any other district, subject to the caps specific to the Mortonson-Garson overlaid district zone, which would limit the overall residential capacity south of I-80. So staff recommends the modification to condition four, given that clarity, but would recommend as proposed in your staff report.
Is it true that the City Council has to be the one to initiate a text amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Nathan, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I feel like you're in an interesting position. Not just because you're on the screen, but these conditions of approval, usually when we see conditions of approval, it's a recommendation from staff working with the applicant in compromising and coming up with these together. The conditions that we're looking at tonight, are these a result of what council asked for specifically?
Condition number 31 was a specific, regarding that temporary emergency access, was a specific council condition of approval. Condition number four was included in the original staff report reviewed by the Planning Commission and ultimately adopted by City Council.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Commissioner Gower.
I don't know what else to ask, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson.
I want to circle back and I want to get staff's take or maybe legal's take on this one as well because there was something that Commissioner Veltou mentioned at the very beginning, which I thought was interesting and was a different way of thinking about this, was that you are saying that the findings that are here, basically, the question is, the findings for this, we are revisiting the original project and the findings, if we could make those findings at the time, does this, excuse me, does this language changing them cause us to make or not make those same findings? I think I'm paraphrasing, but I think, and so I guess I just want to understand it. Is that truly the right way to be looking at this? Because, you know, obviously, there's, this is in response to a, you know, a tentative map, a type of development, all of the conditions, as the applicant mentioned at the very beginning, that we're ultimately satisfied by council's overturning of this body's denial of this particular project. So are we basically being asked to relook at that entire development of these 285 units in that location with all of these, you know, the original findings, less four, or less 31, which wasn't ours anyway, and the modification to four? Is that an appropriate way to be looking at this? Because that's easier for Because that, that's easier for me to wrap my head around than some of these legal arguments that we're, we're looking at here. So I don't know if I, if I phrase that in the form of a question.
Who is it to?
Well, I was going to say, it's to staff, and I've got a lot of staff here, so I'm hoping somebody can jump in on that one.
Commissioner Johnson, I, I think you were directing your, or I should say, I'm not sure if you're directing it towards staff or legal counsel.
I guess I would say, I'm going to go to legal counsel because they've been so patient for this meeting tonight and I will see if they've got feedback. I said, the way that I'm looking at, at understanding is based on what Commissioner Velto had said.
Commissioner Johnson, that makes sense to me, the way, you know, viewing the modification in light of whether you could have made the original findings, I believe is the applicable analysis.
If I could just...
I'll say thank you and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Velto. Thank you.
And I, I mean, to the extent we have to make all the findings here tonight, I think looking at it that way is a useful way of looking at it because we already spent a lot of time making all the findings. So it's helpful to limit the discussion to, could we have made the findings without these two conditions, just to save time and allow us to like reference what we've already decided and the findings we already made.
Are we moving into more questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, can I, can I actually ask a question of staff? Nathan, can you clarify the status of the text amendment? And there were some references to an email from Angela that came out yesterday. What, what's the nature of that and is that text amendment? Where is it? And how does it relate to what we're being asked to decide upon tonight?
The condition of approval number four referenced two options. One was a text amendment and the other was essentially negotiation between developers. The text amendment is, is on hold pending, you know, court decisions on the M-GOD in general.
So if we go with that option, where does that leave the applicant with the text amendment option?
Again, that, that text amendment is, is on hold indefinitely at this time, and that leaves the applicant the option of, of working out with area property owners as was contemplated in the M-GOD handbook.
Thank you, Nathan. Garrett? If this, we go with the option of the text amendment, where does that leave you as the applicant?
So the text amendment process not only included our clarification to satisfy condition number four, but part of the process was the stakeholders, the residents amending hydrologic resources, wildlife corridors, trails and parks. I mean, there was this big comprehensive process going on. Then in light of the Stan Lucas litigation, it was put on hold. An email from Ms. Foose, December 3rd, says, "In terms of the text amendment, Garrett, the city is not going to move forward with any portion of the M-God text amendment until the outstanding litigation is resolved. A final decision on Stan Lucas litigation is still pending, but thought to have resolution in the near future. Stan Lucas was decided on December 30th. I have an email where I forwarded that decision to Ms. Foose and said, Stan Lucas is resolved, can we move forward with the text amendment now?" And was told, no, it's still on hold. And ironically, if it's still on hold because of litigation, the only litigation left out here are the folks behind, behind me suing us at the Supreme Court after losing in district court. So it's not fair to hold up our text amendment process by litigation when it's the folks behind me who are continuing to drag out the litigation after losing at every step of the way. So I agree with Nathan, it's indefinitely on hold and impossible to satisfy at this point in time.
It's frustrating as a planning commissioner to be put in this position, quite frankly, because I, I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but I feel like this is a situation where you as the applicant, staff is just, I think staff's in the same position as us. We're being put in between you and the courts and the city council on this decision. And I don't understand why this text amendment can't move forward as an option, number one, to resolve this more holistically. And I feel like we're being asked to make a one-off decision on something that could be resolved more holistically. I don't disagree with your argument about the 3,000 units and how you presented it relative to AC. My interpretation of it is, my understanding of what you're, you're proposing, it makes sense, quite frankly, from a planning perspective, but is it consistent with 20 years of planning in Verdi? I don't know. And that's where it's really frustrating to be, to be put in that position and frankly not getting any input from staff on this, when you're supposed to be advising this commission in terms of what the recommendation is. All you're saying is, look at the staff report.
Commissioner Gower?
I'm throwing my hands up in the air. Like, how do we make a decision here? It's so frustrating.
This is Jasmine made, for the record. I, and Mr. Gordon might not be aware of this, but we were just served last week with a complaint for damages by the, the owner of Planning Area 1, the Stan Lucas folks, regarding, frankly, regarding the text amendment, the process that we were trying to engage in. And so that's part of the reason why it is still in a holding pattern because, I mean, we haven't even answered or moved in that, in that complaint because we were just served late last week.
Can I just?
Can I just follow up on that? I mean, what, what's going to happen though tonight is if we say, okay, we're, the applicant's request makes sense, that AC can allow for, it doesn't fall within that residential cap, that 285 additional units can, can come in here, if all of a sudden there are 3,285 units, the city's just going to get sued again and we're going to be involved in litigation. So I mean, what are we, what are we gaining by making a decision here tonight?
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, let's, let's, hold on here.
Can I respond?
We, we can respond, but we still have, we have to make a decision tonight to either move this to council with the recommendation by staff or the recommendation by the applicant. We're in a not fun position. We, we did not approve this. Our, was, it was overturned at council, they added conditions, and now we're asking to amend conditions that we didn't even, it's not a good position. So ultimately, council is going to have to make a decision on this. And that's what we are recommending tonight. So Commissioner Velto, I know you have a legal heart.
Well, I just think there's, this, this condition, condition number four presumed that the city would, in my mind, and I don't put, there's a lot of reasons, the city turns out as great attorneys, there's a lot of reasons why y'all have been cautious with the tentative, with the tentative map, but that condition presumed the city was going to act in good faith and pursue a tentative map. That condition, that condition was not put there, or I'm sorry, text amendment was not put there as a means of delaying the project and preventing it from happening. Just because there's a lawsuit, doesn't mean that you stop acting. There's a lot of mechanisms to stop action. If you're filing an appeal at Supreme Court, you can move for a stay and prevent the other party from acting. If you file a lawsuit, you can move for an injunction and prevent the party from acting. If those haven't happened, I don't think we can take that into account. We have to look at, you know, should the project go through? And what's frustrating for me is from the beginning of this is that we already, the city already made a decision on this. This project should go through and seeing that there's a project next to it that went into place after the fact, it's already building, like this is housing that needs to go into effect, we've already agreed this is important, we've already made all the findings. I don't think we should ever condition a project as a means of killing it, and that's what these conditions are doing. So I think that, yeah, the city may get sued at some point. I, I don't, I think, you know, I don't think we should evaluate that, and I, I think we should look at solely whether or not we can make the findings here and I, I think that the code says this project should go through. None of these conditions would preclude me from making the findings, so I, I think we can get rid of them.
Madam Chair, if I could? I think those are great points. Condition four, when we originally looked at it, it said that, yes, one option, one part of it was the text amendment, but the other part of it was the reallocation of the units within, within that M-God planning area. So if that goes away, then that whole piece of the equation, to your point earlier about how we decided and made the findings previously, it was contingent upon, okay, those units would be somehow gathered and reallocated from within N-God and made available for this development within that 3,000 unit cap. I think that was everyone's assumption at that point. So now we're, now we're being presented with, if that goes away, if that condition goes away, there's this other mechanism to get there, which frankly makes sense, but is it consistent with this logic train that's been going on for the last 20 years? Right?
I guess I disagree with the idea that there would be a cap of 3,000, given on what the code says. Because I read the code as saying, 3,000 unit cap for residential and X amount of acres arterial commercial, there's other language saying that can be, that the, the M-God and the Morrison-Garson handbook says that the limitations on residential units does not apply to commercial, expressly in the handbook. So because of that, I, I disagree with the fact that everyone thought this was going to be 3,000.
So if this was presented to you the first time and it said, if that condition four said residential units up to 285 units in this AC would be allowed above and beyond the 3,000, you could have made the findings and voted for it?
Yet, the code, the code was what the code was. I would have looked at the code and said, that code is clear. And if someone had said it's ambiguous, I'd have looked at the handbook and said, the handbook is clear, the limitation doesn't apply. And, I mean, you know my general view on trying to build more affordable housing and making sure we have the right types of housing. This may not be affordable, but it's the units we need. So yes, I absolutely could have made the findings then with that and I can still make them today.
So I'm looking for Commissioner Velto again.
I mean, is there, I'm ready to make, is there more discussion or?
Well, I mean, I think you can try a motion and see what comes out of the discussion.
Okay.
I think you can punt. Real quick, are there any number limitations on this or majority, a majority or just, I don't know if I've seen this request before, it's just a request, so is it regular majority?
These were, it, it's, in this case, it's a distinction without a difference, I think, but you, it was, they were conditions of approval for a tentative map, and so the requirement is a majority of the entire body would have to vote.
Okay.
Say that again.
I think a tentative map is for...
Tendative map approval. I'm sorry.
I think tentative map has, has to be four.
Right.
Votes. Yes.
Majority of the entire body.
Okay, so we need four votes one way or another for a motion or for something to go through.
And just to clarify, unlike a tentative map, which we're the final deciding body, the recommendation here is going to city council. Because the, the motion here is to recommend city council uphold staff recommendations. So I, I guess I'm confused as to what, you know, are we doing a tentative map, are we doing a special use permit? Are we doing, or is it because it's the changes to the conditions that it has to go to city council?
It's the changes to the conditions of approval.
But then it's still the four.
Yes.
Based on, okay, thank you. Just to make it even more confusing.
In that case, Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion. I want to run the motion by the, by legal after I say it to make sure it's...
Sure.
On the matter of LDC 21-00038, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that the city council delete condition 31 because it's impossible to satisfy, no longer necessary, and to construct 285 residential dwelling units by deleting condition four because the cap does not apply to arterial commercial and there is a 10% density increase in the code. And I can make all the findings.
Fine to me.
Okay. Great.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dragic, real quick, just notable, we have that applicant requested amendment to condition four. Do you want to consider that or? I'm good with what you came in with, but he had his own version, which did have some level of protection for the residents. I believe that was his intent, if you see that on page three in the red.
I would not like to include that.
Okay.
But like to clarify that the motion is based on either the arterial commercial or the density increase.
Yeah.
Not necessarily locking into both.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Commissioner Dragic, a second and can make all the findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the discussion. The, the interesting thing for me is that, and that was the reason for me asking the question, in terms of what we're looking at here, I mean, we're, we're basically being asked to change the conditions of approval, but it's in looking at an overall project. And I couldn't then, and I can't now, make the findings of compatibility for this level of density in this location. So even with the changes and the modifications, I think the modifications proposed here actually make it worse in my mind because I had a problem with the level of density based on all of the other factors that have been, as I understand, decided, but if we are looking at this as a change to the overall project, I was not able to make the findings in the overall project because of the density of this particular unit. So while I think the argument here and that I've heard is valid, it's being applied to a project that I couldn't make the findings on in the first place, and nothing has changed in that with respect to the density that we're looking at here. So, and, and nothing in my mind has changed then from now in terms of where we're at. So if, if it, and again, if it was tied to less or a specific item, but because it's tied to this overall project and the way this density is put into there and how it works, I couldn't make the finding then and I still can't make the finding now. So that's my discussion for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Interesting discussion tonight.
Very interesting.
Thanks for that. I will not be supporting the motion and I have two primary reasons for it. The first reason is that the density bonus, as it's being presented, I do not think is accurate. The density bonus, in my opinion, wouldn't necessarily apply to a whole planning area, so 3,000 units, you get 10%, you get 300 additional units. A density bonus, in my opinion, and my interpretation as a planner, applies to a specific site and a project being proposed. So at most, you know, if a project had 285 units proposed, for example, it might be able to get 10% above that. It wouldn't necessarily apply to the whole planning area. The 3,000, excuse me, the arterial commercial argument relative to the residential dwelling units is compelling, and I think that it frankly makes a lot of sense. The challenge that I have is the need to defer back to M-God for the decision, which states that residential units, regardless of what the zoning or master plan would allow for, the M-God says that the residential units cannot exceed 3,000. So no matter how you get there, there's still that 3,000 unit cap. It doesn't say 3,285 units, it says 3,000. So for that reason, I... 3,000. So for that reason, I cannot support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Do we have other discussion? Commissioner Velto?
The the only thing I want to, I want to say to that is, I'm reading quoted from the handbook, and it says, up to 300 residential units, there's some words in between, which limitation does not include 176 acres. I read that as saying, there's this many residential units, but this limitation does not apply to the 176 acres of commercial. And that's a, that's in the handbook. So I, maybe we're just disagreeing on how to read it, but that's, I think, where we just, that's just where our disagreement is.
And I think that's fundamentally exactly it, Commissioner Velto. It's an interpretation issue. Yep. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll just see what happens with Michelle and her roll call vote.
There we go. Taylor?
Yes.
Draculich?
Yes.
Gower?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Munoz?
Yes.
Velto?
Yes.
So the motion passes four to two, one absent.
Okay, is that good for legal? Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Johnson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the good folks at TMRPA understood that we were going to have a long meeting tonight, and they have canceled our meeting for next week because we do not have any items on the agenda. So the next regional meeting will actually be in May. And there hasn't been a meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. Jason, number eight, staff announcements, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. So a fun agenda for you tonight. You can see our staff is very busy processing applications, and we've had some challenging ones as of lately. So thank you for taking the time to kind of review your packets. Moving onwards, I wanted to let you know we're actively hiring right now, so we have some new faces coming on board. We just got a new planning technician. His name is Jim Umback, and we have also hired two assistant planners. So we're looking forward to bringing them on staff to help with application processing. In addition, to kind of just to recap on city council items, on April 11th, there was another affordable housing workshop, so kind of progressing in that direction. Nathan was involved with that. So there's a team of city staff that are kind of actively working to try to bring solutions forward, as you're all aware of the need in this area. Also, April 13th, Corel Academy and Peavine with the associated annexation were heard at the council, and so those were approved slash adopted. And there's two ongoing appeals kind of in process right now. Reno Iron Works, that did have a public hearing that was continued to May. There's some negotiations going on. I think that's, most of you are familiar with that. But it has to deal with the appeal filed by the S P E C A, and they're currently negotiating on finding alternative locations and other solutions. Additionally, there's also the Jacobs Appeal, which will be in May 11th, I believe. So that was originally scheduled to the 27th, but there's an onsite noticing issue, so that's been postponed till May 11th. So that's a recap, but pretty busy. So thank you for the late evening tonight.
Thank you, and your team. Item number nine, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items.
Madam Chair, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Gower's suggestion from earlier this evening about the lighting at the car lots, and maybe sort of nuance between lumens and, you know, foot candles, and just get an understanding of that.
Absolutely. We've noted that down, and I will also say that it's been a staff discussion item at our team meetings, so.
Okay, item number 10, Public Comment. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
I did not receive request to speak forms, no voicemails, and no correspondence was received.
Thank you. We will close public comment. And item number 11, Adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.